33, 21. Commission, Reno County Commission to order. At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a prayer from Pastor Tim Craft at First Church of God. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together. Lord God, you said in your word that your divine power has given us everything we need for life and godly living through our knowledge of you. So help us to know you more. We need you. You also said that if we lack wisdom, we can ask you and you will generously give it. Give us your wisdom, oh Lord. For it is you who are everywhere. It is you who has all the power and it is you who knows everything. You are our creator. I pray that you will bless this board of commissioners with that wisdom and guidance. They've been chosen by the people of this county. You know them, their needs, their motives, their hopes, their fears. And Lord, I ask that you give them that encouragement and greater insight to find solutions to solve problems. And God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting. Help us to accomplish the necessary goals while displaying your character. And Lord, thank you for those who will present their concerns and issues. May they do so in a way that reflects a greater good for all. I thank you for eternal life, hope, and unlimited possibilities in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Welcome everyone who's here in attendance as well as those who have joined us via Internet. I don't have any announcements. So at this time, we will look forward to hearing from Carla Nichols and Karen Hammer Smith from the Health Department.
I think I have it. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Good morning. Just wanted to give you an update, which we have actually good news, so very excited about that. This data is from yesterday. So total cases, we had 7,687. We have total active cases, 136. That's the same with the community active cases. We have a 14-day positive test rate and that was set from 214, a 7.2 percent, and a 14-day new case count per 100,000 of 116. We have not seen these numbers since September, so it is very, very good news. We have definitely trended down. The last time that we took that, a week before that, was 2721. It was 11.6 percent and 181. So it's continued to go in the right direction. We have had 135 total deaths. Deaths in the last 30 days have been 21. Total hospitalizations during the pandemic have been 365 with ICU admissions at 103. These are all Reno County residents. The health order 21-01 was put in place to extend amended health order 20-05 with no changes. That was to have the mask gathering limits to 10. We put that in place back in November due to the fact that we had a trend upward of cases and a positive test rate, which actually got to as high as 51 percent. So that has definitely trended down. We are very excited about that. That order expires tomorrow and we will not renew that. Reno County is still under the governor's mask mandate. The education that we do want to continue to put out is that even though the case count is down and the percentage rate is down, it is still encouraged to wear a mask over your nose and mouth, stay at least six feet away from others, avoid crowds, avoid poorly ventilated spaces, wash your hands often. So those things are still mitigating measures in place. All schools are going back in person full-time. I believe Bueller will be the last one there, pushing their date back to March 1st. But Hutch went back full-time last week. Nickerson went back yesterday. Haven has been back. Pretty Prairie and Fairfield have been back and the private schools are in session as well. We are looking to vaccinate more people to get that percentage so that we have either natural immunity or the vaccine out. So we're looking to get 70 to 85 percent, which would be herd immunity. It will be some time yet, but it depends on how much vaccination comes out. But also, it's helping that the virus is now at a less incident rate here in Reno County. To date, we have received in 3,100 doses during Phase 2 of those first round doses. And then we look to receive in another 3,600 doses this week. We did not get vaccinations in last week due to the weather across the country, even though it got nicer here at the end of the week. Across the country, they did not ship that. So we got doses in yesterday and then we should get a shipment in either, my guess is it'll be tomorrow because I did not get an email last night stating that we were getting it in. But we do have previous emails stating that would be sent this week, so we don't have any concerns that we won't be getting that. We do have our second round. From the first pod that we did on January 29th, I believe it was, we have our second round doses this Friday. And so those were scheduled at that time and we're also having volunteers call those people and remind them that they have an appointment to get their second vaccine done. And then we have our next, first round dose next Tuesday. So just continuing to work on those pods, focusing on those groups 65 and older. We did get word in yesterday, or last week, and we have been working with them. And that was late on Friday. The Medicine Shop got the opportunity, they have been working with their representatives from Cardinal and pushing them that they wanted vaccine in. And so they were able to get Pfizer vaccine in. And Pfizer is a little bit harder to work with. You have to store it at sub-zero temperatures and it doesn't last as long. So you're dealing with dry ice or a really, really cold freezer. Anyhow, they accepted that in and Lacey Stone called me. So she wanted to see what we could do. And so her idea is to go ahead and we are going to go out to those districts and get the rest of the district's personnel vaccinated. And so we will be assisting the Medicine Shop. It will be their pod. We'll assist that. They're going to use school nurses, school personnel, and some volunteers that way to get all the districts in Reno County, including the private schools, vaccinated K through 12, so up to 1,000 of those, which we really feel like will probably cover most of those in that district. So very, very exciting to work with the Medicine Shop on that endeavor. That would be my report for today. And Carla, do you have more to add?
I just wanted to reiterate how many times I have been told how well and efficient you run the operation. So just thank you for all the effort.
Thank you. That's a lot from the department and the emergency preparedness.
When will the educator pod be conducted?
Oh, that will be Sunday and they're going to do that at the Salt Hawk Activity Center. And it's a closed pod, so we'll send a registration out and do it very similar. And that's why we're assisting as far as like, here's the organization part of it, but it's their pod to run.
And do we have any idea how many vaccinations Dillons and other pharmacies have done?
So, no. I did speak with them when they first got vaccinations in. They were to get 100 in each store and that was at the Dillons on 30th and Dillons on 5th and that was the first week. The second week, they were to get another 100 doses in with Dillons on 4th, but that would have been last week. And then we had those storms. So I don't know that anybody got any vaccinations in last week at all.
And are they advising you so that you can delete those names from your sign-up list?
No, and that's, that's part of the issue of just trying to keep track of everything. So we had the original sign-up through the Health Department. And so we go to call those people and say, hey, we've got an appointment time. And then a lot of times they're telling us, I've already got my vaccination or I have an appointment scheduled. So we have to call a few more people, but we're just continuing to work on that as everybody is just working on getting those people vaccinated.
And how many under, how many people over 65 do you still have on the list?
Carla said in the press release this morning, we have 2,700 that are on the list and we have-
But that's probably not that many due to clinics, Dillons?
Correct. It could be a few less than that. We do have three more first round clinics scheduled and we are continuing to call all of them to get them an appointment scheduled, so whether it be in the first pod, second pod, or third pod.
Good.
And I'll add one thing if you guys don't mind. So with that, our hopes, it'll probably take us a couple of weeks to get through those 2,700. So we ask the Reno County residents to please be patient, but please expect to call within the next two weeks to have an appointment time scheduled with one of those primary pods. That is our goal.
Yeah, thanks, guys. I think you're doing a great job and I appreciate, like the other commissioners said, about how we've, we've set an example for, for others for running very efficient and effective vaccine pods and processes. So very proud of the Health Department and all of the emergency management and all of our health partners and all of that collaboration. I had a question. Is Pfizer the one? I always forget which one's the single dose. Is that?
At this point in time, we don't have a single dose that's on the market.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Johnson &amp; Johnson should be coming, but we don't have that available.
So Pfizer's just, just a two-dose?
Yeah, it's a two-dose series and it's 21 days apart. So we will be assisting Medicine Shop with this and then 21 days later, they're going to have to turn around and, and do another pod to get their second doses in.
Well, it's really encouraging that we have private business that's collaborating in this effort and that they're coordinating on, on the priorities for the community. And I think it's been, been this commission's mission to vaccinate K through 12 in any way we can. And it's a good, good step in the right direction to getting, getting kids back in school full-time. So thank you for, for that collaboration and thanks to the Medicine Shop for their, their work too. I think that's all I had.
Do you have any idea of, or have you been informed of anything of, after they receive the second shot? And while, is there any positive tests on that or does they all come back negative? Do you know?
So the vaccine would not be 100 percent effective and that is how all vaccines are. So they're 95 percent effective is, is what we're looking at. And we don't know that they can't stop the transmission. So we have people really continuing to push that education out of, you need to continue to wear the mask, wash your hands, social distance, because nothing is 100 percent effective.
You know, I think what I heard Mr. Chairman say, maybe I was wrong, but he was asking if the vaccine could trigger a positive.
Yes, that's what I was asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So it depends if you're taking an antibody test. So an antibody is just going to show, do you have vaccine, that you have antibodies that you've created from the vaccine or because you've had the virus that you have antibodies? So an antibody test should come back positive if you've had the vaccine. If you did the nasopharyngeal swab, that should not come back positive.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's a percentage of the people that take, take the vaccine, even though they may not have it, does it come back positive? There's no way to tell whether they have it or was from the vaccine itself?
So this is not a live virus, so you would not get the virus from it, but you would develop antibodies.
Okay. It's a killed virus, killed vaccine?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now if there's, there's no one out there that has a public comment that's not on the agenda?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Is there any additions or revisions to the agenda? Commissioner Sellers?
None.
Commissioner Friesen?
No, thank you.
County Administrator?
No.
County Counselor?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent agenda is rather long today. And so if there's someone that wants to get something off of there, you can please ask, but I'll run through this. Vouchers, which are bills or payments owed by the county is $549,717.90. The CRF vouchers total $31,857.88. We have some change orders, 85-130, 85 through 134. Minutes of meetings for December 20th, 20 and January 2021. The appointment of Terry Ketchum as clerk on Hays Township Board. Appointment of Carla Nichols as Reno County's representative on Horizon's Mental Health Board of Directors. Public Works purchase of a 2021 Dodge Ram 4500, one and a quarter ton cabin chassis from Allen Samuels at a cost of $46,892. Public Works purchase of a 2021 Landall 25-ton hydraulic trailer from Larry's Trailer Sales at a cost of $56,995. Public Works purchase of a 2021 Massey Ferguson tractor from John Schmidt &amp; Sons Inc. at a cost of $63,300 after trade. Public Works purchase of a 2021 Massey Ferguson tractor and a diamond 22-foot boom mower from John Schmidt &amp; Sons at a cost of $126,142 after trade. Public Works purchase of a 2021 John Deere Track excavator from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company at a cost of $173,561.22 after trade. Public Works purchase of a John Deere Commercial Zero Turn mower from Prairieland Partners at a cost of $6,150. And the GLMV proposal for design service of the Reno County Courthouse at a cost of $8,800. Is there any questions or Randy, would you like to comment on any of these?
No. On the public works purchases in the packet, they did all go off for bid and then the GLMV, also the $8,800 that was mentioned to the commission previously at the special session that you guys had at the annex at the end of January.
Okay. Remind me what CIP means?
Capable Improvement.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to point out, and she might have already gone back to her office, but this appointment of Carla Nichols as our representative to the Horizon's Mental Health Board, I think is of particular importance in her job function. Horizon's is such an important function of the county and so forth that I, I hope that she'll take that appointment very seriously and be an active board member of Horizon's.
So noted, I agree. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes. All right, motion approved. At this time, we'll open the meeting to a public hearing for the purpose of evaluating the performance of the 132,000 CDBG CV grant number 20-CV-056. So we'll open the hearing. Discussion? Do we have a representative here? Or Randy, would you like to cover this, please?
This is Elizabeth from SCED.
Sure, yeah. Well, good morning. My name is Elizabeth Lawless. I work for SCED, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. We helped to administer your community development block grant COVID, for COVID-19. There were a total of 132,000 in grant funds. Those went to small businesses impacted by COVID-19. The funds were a part of the Federal Cares Act, but were distributed through the Kansas Department of Commerce. Reno County was able to serve eight small businesses in the area. The program focused on low to moderate income job retention. You were able to retain a total of 21 jobs, 18 of which were low to moderate income. So the, all the funds have been expended and we're ready to close out the grant, but wanted to open it up to any comments or questions.
Elizabeth, I assume that all the businesses that we helped with this money are still in operation? Are you aware?
I have not heard any, that any of the businesses have closed. I believe that the funds really helped to keep them open.
Are we looking for a motion to approve?
Yes.
Now to close the hearing.
I'd make a motion-
Right, we need to close the hearing. So if there's no further questions, well, thank you, Elizabeth, for coming over. So we'll close the public hearing on the evaluation and performance of the CDBG CV grant. So at this point in time, then I would take a motion to authorize the closeout of the CDBG CV grant number 20-CV-056.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes. Thanks for helping me along there.
No problem, Chairman.
Okay, next on the item of the agenda is the business items. Noxious weed annual management plan and eradication program, which we hear every year from Don Britton, Public Works Director. Don?
Two more questions from Don Britton, Public Works Director. This is the annual noxious weed management plan and the eradication progress report that's required by the state statute to be submitted to the Department of Agriculture every year to confirm Reno County's commitment to controlling noxious weed and to report the number of acres noxious weeds treated. And just for brief clarification for Daniel, on page one, at the chemical sales that we sold to the public was $26,410.58. And we sell that at 75 percent of the cost that the county has to pay for them. We bought $28,445.58 worth of chemicals. On the next page, it also says our, you know, our ending balance budget for this weed department is $99,776.58. The main part for you gentlemen is to sign the commitment that we are aggressively trying to control noxious weed in this county by selling chemicals to the public, by spraying our right of ways, and then meet the goals that are listed on this page. Do you have any questions?
Don, was last year a unique year due to COVID or was it just in this, this regard, just an average year of doing the weed prevention?
Just an average year. The one page, page two is kind of interesting. It says, you know, what weeds we sprayed the most, you know, like field bind weed on private property is 1,673 acres. And how that is determined is by the chemical that we sell. They come in and they ask, they give us their land description and by the ounces of chemical that we sell them, per what it's supposed to take per acre for that particular noxious weed, that's how we come up with those acres for bind weed and, and what we sprayed in the county and the township. And that's how that's figured, so you know.
So, Don, the purpose of this program, is it mainly for protection of agriculture? Like, does it-
It's eradication of noxious weed.
But that's, the reason we do that is, is because it could have spread to, is it mainly for agriculture or for just wildlife in general or what?
It's mainly, it's, you know, it, these are uncontrollable noxious weeds that, that can take over land, take over farmland, take over right of way. And that's why we aggressively try to deal with them.
Okay.
Do the people that-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The enforcement summary, I assume this is the county sending warnings to, to landowners to eradicate certain noxious weeds that we've seen on their property?
Yes. When, when we see those and there's nothing being done about them, we send them letters. We sent out 12 of those this year.
Okay.
And then they're required to spray them.
And that's, we've had pretty good compliance with that, it looks like?
Yes.
And we, so anybody that has noxious weeds can come to the county Public Works and purchase. You'll advise them on what they need.
They come there with their, their noxious weed. If they don't know what they are, we give them what chemicals we think best eradicate them and then sell those at 75 percent of the cost that we purchase them for.
Okay.
Do the people that you sell chemicals to have to have a state application license?
No. There's only one chemical that we sell that requires any kind of training that they have to have and then all the other chemicals are just bought over the county.
Which one is that?
Torron 22.
Pretty powerful stuff.
It's a restricted label from the state that you have to have a license to, pesticides applicator license on your own property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's fairly easy. It can be done at the, online or it can be done there at the Reno County Extension Office, correct?
Correct.
And I would, I would encourage people, if they see musthistle, if they see bind weed, if they see any of these noxious weeds, to contact the Public Works Department so that they know about them and can get out there. Because there are limited days with spraying with field crops around, that the sooner they know about these, the more able they are to get out and spray them and kill them. So, and, and you're talking about spreading. It's very easy if it's in the, in the ditch and so forth to get out and alfalfa and wheat and so forth. And then that would limit the amount of certification that you could do on crops if you want to sell them certified or registered. So I would just encourage people to, if they see something out on a county road, that please contact and let them know where they are. Because depending upon the year, grass can grow up pretty high and doesn't take long to cover it up, so they can't see it. And when they mow, then they see it and it may be too late to do it again. So please just contact the Public Works Department.
If you see them on township roads, contact the township so that they can come in, buy some chemicals and get it sprayed.
Yeah, that's, we do the county, county does the county roads. The township can contact Public Works and buy the chemical and go spray on the township roads. All right? Any other?
Do we have to approve this or do we need a motion?
Yes. And you'll be signing it?
I would move that we approve the noxious weed annual management plan and authorize the signature of the document.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Not, we'll call a roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, Adam, for emergency management update. Okay, Adam, for emergency management update.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Weiser, Emergency Management Director. I provided you with the report, and in that report, I kind of wanted to give you our mission statement, our history, and kind of how we got to where we are. I will open up for any questions at the end. I'm not going to really go through the report, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. A couple of the high points I wanted to hit is our operating plans and operating guidelines. That, I believe that's on page three of my report. The LEOP, which is our Local Emergency Operation Plan, is a plan that we do every five years. It's really what guides us through the disaster process, and it's really what becomes kind of our bible when there's a disaster declaration in place. That Local Emergency Operation Plan was actually set to expire this year in 2020, and it was due to the state. Due to COVID restrictions and time constraints, we got that extended until December of 2021. I don't believe that that will be extended again, so we're going to be working really hard to try to get that done by that date. If you're not familiar with that document, the document's somewhere around two hundred and fifty to three hundred pages. So, there's, there's lots of information in there, and it breaks it down to every emergency support function in the county and what their role is during a large event. In the past year, we've also completed our mitigation plan, and that was also brought before the commission and adopted. Skipping forward, under Coordination and Resources, it talks about how the local emergency manager is responsible for creating a local disaster declaration. As I'm sure the commission's aware, we've been under a disaster declaration since mid-March of last year. So, we're going on a year, and we're almost a year into our active response. Something that has just changed as of yesterday from this report is those disaster threshold numbers. The state comes out with new disaster threshold numbers every year, and they usually increase. So, it went from three seventy-eight per capita to three eighty-nine. So, they're using 2010 census data, a sixty-four thousand, five hundred and eleven residents to come up with that number. So, to qualify for any sort of reimbursement from the state or federal government, Reno County is now responsible for, for the first two hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. That's up roughly seven thousand dollars since, since last year. The state's also has gone up. The state's at four million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents. And again, that's, that's to receive a presidential disaster declaration. To receive any sort of reimbursement from the state or federal government, we have to meet our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, and the state has to meet their four point four million dollar threshold before we can submit those eligible costs to FEMA. Those eligible costs can include equipment, materials, supplies, infrastructure costs. What it doesn't cover is the increased cost of what a, what a supply would. So, for example, if, if the county is buying boxes of gloves for seven dollars, and we're used to buying those gloves for seven dollars a box, and they go up to ten dollars a box, they're not going to cover that extra three dollars. They, they could cover the cost of the gloves, but they're not, they're not going to say, okay, you've, you've been buying these gloves just because they're three dollars more expensive. We're not going to go reimburse you for those three dollars. When you talk about individuals' homes, we tried to get SBA loans for, for, to help cover some damages to individuals' homes during flooding in twenty nineteen. And what that is, is you have to have a forty percent or greater loss shown to those homes to qualify for, qualify for those low, low-interest rate loans through SBA. Statewide, we can qualify for those SBA loans if somewhere between one hundred and three hundred homes meet that threshold. So, to, to get individual assistance into the county is really challenging. I know in the past, it's been done for the Greensburg tornado, and it's also been done in Coffee County for flooding, but I couldn't tell you any time that it's actually happened in the county. Moving on, the Reno County Emergency Operations Center, which is located in the law enforcement center of the courthouse in the basement there, gets activated anytime we have severe weather. Whether, we have three different activation levels. One's a watch, one's a partial activation, one's a full-scale activation. Generally, for a watch, it just indicates that there's a disaster that's imminent. We notify the agencies that this is kind of what's going on. We're going to watch this. A partial activation is generally what we do for severe weather. There's usually police, sheriff, fire department down there. We coordinate resources out of there. And then a full activation is for a large-scale event. March usually starts our, our busy time every year between wildfires and severe weather, so I would expect that to ramp up. And it's one of those things where, yeah, we're still, still dealing with COVID. We have to take, the most pressing incident has to take precedence at that point in time. So, if there's a big wildfire, there's a tornado, we deal with that event first, and we can come back and deal with COVID later. Where Reno County as a whole is just simply not large enough. We don't have enough bench strength to, to deal with multiple incidents going on at the same time. Want to go back to COVID a little bit and kind of talk about what we've done in the past year. To say it's been challenging would probably be an understatement. Our response really started all the way back in, on February third, and that's when we had some real conversations about COVID-19 potentially entering our community. The first COVID case was in Johnson County on March seventh, and then on March ninth, we started talking about social distancing. On March twelfth, the state of Kansas issued a state disaster declaration for a public health emergency, and then President Trump declared a national emergency on March thirteenth. March fifteenth, schools closed for one week. March seventeenth, schools closed for the rest of the year. March nineteenth is when Reno County declared a public health emergency, and then March twentieth is when we announced our first case of a positive COVID case. So, that's kind of how our march started last year, and we've been continuing that response for going on a year now. And I, I think we're going to come out of it. We're all going to be better, stronger as a community, but it's been a challenge. I believe that's all I have for you this morning. Is there questions I can answer for you or anything about my report?
Adam, just a couple of questions. I know the fire department was doing some burn deals for spring prevention. Did they accomplish all that they wanted to do at this point, or is there more to be done?
I believe they're gonna, they're gonna try to burn again on Thursday, and that'll be their last burn day. And I will take it back. One, one more thing I didn't touch on in my report either is we're still in the middle of our fire study that we're doing with the rural fire districts. We're hoping that's going to come to a conclusion here in the next month or two. So, we're, we're working with our, our consultant on a weekly basis, trying to, trying to push this process along.
Okay. Since emergency management is a coordination of many different departments in the county and city and townships and so forth, are there any groups that don't actively cooperate with your department that the county officials need to visit with to improve our total county operation?
So, right now, I think we're doing okay. We have a pretty good relationship working, working with the community, and COVID has really seemed to bring a lot of those groups together, and it's been, in that regard, it's been a benefit to us because everyone wants to work with us. We've had challenges with the past, in the past, with some of the flooding issues and that sort of thing, but I hope those are in the past, and we're, we're moving forward from there.
Good. Adam, we talked yesterday regarding a question that one mayor brought up. And in case that, other commissioners here are asked, are asked the same thing, would you cover the, this regarding the gas prices? And we, it's really too early yet to know what's going to happen, but just in case you get a question, we get a question, would you cover some of that for us? Early on, I noticed the governor's done something with that, but we don't know yet, but, and it's too early. But just in case we get questions like I did.
So, KMGA, the Kansas Municipal Gas Association, as well as Kansas municipalities have reached out to our small cities that are covered by KMGA and encouraged them to ask their emergency management to do a local disaster declaration. And in turn, they've also told the cities that they can do their own local disaster declaration. From my knowledge, the cities are not recognized by the state to be able to do a disaster declaration and qualify for any expenditures or anything like that in a large event. The, we as emergency management, as the Board of County Commissioners, can declare an emergency. And what that means is it activates our response and recovery portion of that emergency operation plan we talked about, and we're responsible for that first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of eligible expense. Eligible expense in this case would not be their increased operational, operational cost because gas prices are more expensive. That's not a FEMA-eligible expense. A FEMA-eligible expense would be something like materials, overtime, infrastructure costs if something was crippled. We called all the small cities at the start of this, when we knew there was a gas problem, when we knew there was a power problem, and said, what do you need from us? What can we provide you? Are you worried? And we, we got the same resounding message from every, every small city saying, we're okay. We don't need anything. We don't think we're going to have any gas issues. Had they said, we think we're going to have gas issues, we might need a warming center, we might need these things, we probably would have done a local disaster declaration, knowing that we could be relying on some of our partners and/or state help to come in here and start a warming center and be able to shelter these people. But simply put, that's not the case. A conference call with the state yesterday, they told us that they've, they've talked to FEMA every single day, and they're telling us over and over that there is no funding to help with increased gas bills right now. So, not saying that can't change, but right now, there, there's no funding available, and we'll continue to monitor it. But I don't think it would be appropriate for us to do a disaster declaration for this event at this current time.
Thank you. I just wanted to, Commissioners, I guess they got a request that they would know something.
Adam, appreciate your work, and I wanted, I wanted to make a couple of comments, you know, just being a little more involved in some of the weekly conference calls you guys have had. I think emergency management's doing a great job, and, and you guys, it seems like you're kind of the ones that are behind the scenes and never get any credit. And, you know, there's a lot of work that you're doing on, on the, the mitigation of this, this health emergency that, you know, you're, you're in a very supportive role to the Health Department, and can see you guys advising them a lot, and I appreciate your work on the pod and, and all of that. And I don't know if you get enough credit for, for all the overtime and hours you've done, but certainly this commission thanks you for, for that. Do you, just, you know, I've asked before, do you feel like you have all the resources you need right now? I know COVID's really stressed your department, and, and you're, you're working a lot of overtime. Is there anything this commission can do for your department?
Right now, I, I think we're okay. One of the things that worries me, to be frank with you, is I'm not sure if the state's going to extend their disaster declaration or not. If the state does not extend their disaster declaration, which is set to expire at the end of this month, it, it could be, it could hurt us. We're having, we're still having trouble getting supplies into the county, sharps, containers, gloves, just some simple things you wouldn't think about. We can, we can reach out to the state. We can generally receive those within twenty-four hours. If the state chooses not to extend that declaration, we can't get any of that stuff. They essentially shut down the operation. So, looking at the immediate future, that's my fear, is hoping that they continue, so they continue to support us. But locally, I, I think we have all the support we need. It's, at the start of this, I never would have told you, we, we would have been here a year, a year later, but here we are. And we, we gotta keep looking forward, know at some point this is going to end.
So, can you walk us through that? So, let's say the emergency declaration expires, and i- is it, is it true to say right now, you're kind of, you're, you're a lot of the logistical backend for, for the Health Department's response? I mean, are you, are you providing them with, with, with materials they need? Or are you providing that to other health agencies? And what happens if we lose the declaration?
So, it's anyone in the county right now that is a healthcare provider, non-for-profit, religious organization, anything like that. We, we provided supplies for them. And it's, it's everything from gowns, gloves, masks. We got a request from a home healthcare agency to provide antigen testing to them this week. And it's, we reach out to the state, we do a disaster, or we do a resource request. We document everything, why it's needed, and submit that. It goes to their policy group and says yes or no. If the state doesn't have a disaster declaration in place, that process shuts down. The state EOC is not activated. If we need it, and we can't find it, we just can't find it.
So, essentially, at that point, everybody's on their own?
Correct.
You, you can't, you can't request anything. They're not going to send anything.
Correct.
And, and if they, if the state expires, and, and we continue ours, does that help?
It, it'll help locally because it'll keep our EOP activated, and it keeps the spending power with the county. And we know that eventually those costs will be reimbursed. But it's, to me, it's really imperative that the state stays active and they keep their supply chains open for us.
Okay. Is that something maybe you could report back? Maybe pose the question to all the, all the agencies that you're supporting that, hey, if, if our ability to help you goes away, well, you know, maybe you could report back on what, what they're saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I, I had one, one other comment. I know it's probably really hard for you right now with, with, with everything, but maybe you could file it away as something to work on when things get back to normal. But, you know, when, when I transitioned from, from mayor of the city of Beulah, the, the, the new mayor said, you know, what do I, what are my responsibilities in an emergency? And, you know, you know, I think every city in the county has an emergency operations plan, and, and they coordinate with you on the county's plan. But it might be good sometime to coordinate a meeting with all the small cities in the county and just brush off the emergency operations plan and talk through what everybody's role is. Because it's, it's, it's different in a small community where you're just, you know, your mayor once a month kind of at a, at a meeting, and then you kind of fill in duties here and there. But certainly not professional emergency operators like you, and yet there's some pretty high expectations in time of emergency for those people, so.
So, the goal's going to be when, when we're redoing our LEOP, our emergency operation plan, when we actually dig, dig into that process, every small city, every township has a role in that. So, we want to get with, either virtually or in person, get with all those small cities and say, these, this is your section. Please go through it. Please read it. These are kind of the expectations the county has on you. Are you okay with that, or do we need to add it? Because they fall under our plan as well.
And, and, you know, something I think you, you could probably do right, right now, that wouldn't take a whole lot of effort is just maybe emailing the mayors and, and the clerks and just saying, hey, you know, I think everybody's starting to think about tornadoes again, you know, as March comes, and maybe that would be an easy one. It's like, here's what we're going to do if, if you, you know, you, you have a tornado in your community, and here's how you, you work with us, you know. It might be an easy one. But thanks again for all you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your support.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Friesen's comments on your department this past year. Just excellent service to the county. We appreciate your efforts, Adam. And I think, Mr. Friesen, you were just talking basically about communication, making sure that, that they know, and you, you know. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Mr. Garrett, you are up for emergency management up, Horizons Metal Health. I'm still getting used to these glasses, okay?
You talk about emergency management.
Well, the only thing I would say is, Adam's been a great resource for us. You ask if, if organizations would be impacted if the declaration ended and they weren't able to get supplies. We got a lot of supplies through them. We require everybody that comes into our organization to have a mask, and we got a lot of masks through Adam's service. So, we relied very heavily on, on what they've been able to provide. My name is Mike Garrett. I'm the CEO of Horizons, and I want to kind of give you a brief overview of what I'm going to present. This is probably the fullest agenda that I've ever presented. This is probably the fullest, uh, agenda that I've ever presented to, to you guys. Um, I want to provide you with an orientation. I've sent that information to you and that's really, uh, kind of a, um, re-education for you guys that have been on the commission, but then educating Commissioner Friesen on who we are and what we do. Go over our latest financials. Uh, I want to share some new initiatives that's going on with Horizons. I want to go over our consumer satisfaction survey and I sent that to you as well. And then I have Audra with us who is our clinician in the jail and she has some information that she'll provide you with, uh, there. The other thing I'd like to mention, uh, when I was in the, the waiting area, uh, I was, uh, I heard you, um, appoint Carla to our board and I stopped Carla on her way out, introduced myself and we'll be connecting over the next couple, three weeks. I'll meet with her as an orientation and we'll get all that set for her to start participating uh, on our board. I'm really glad that she's going to be there. Uh, she seemed excited about it and I'm really hoping that she'll be an active, uh, member on our board. Um, the first item that I have is, is this document, which is, uh, the orientation to Horizons and I'm just gonna go through a couple of quick, uh, slides on it. Um, on page four, um, it says that our licensing regulations require us to provide services to all Kansans regardless of their ability to pay and consequently we're a safety net clinic. And so we see, uh, people, uh, that don't have any resources available to them and if they're homeless, they need our help, uh, those services will probably be free as well. And we use county money as well as state money to underwrite the cost of those services. Um, on page six, uh, it talks about community mental health centers are governed both by the state and the counties and they're locally administered. A lot of the decisions about what we do locally is directed by our board, which Carla is a representative on, but each community mental health center in the state, and there's 26 of them, have defined areas. And what I provided on the next one, page five, is a map of those, uh, community mental health centers. And you can see down in south central Kansas in the red is Horizons and the five counties that we serve here. You can see that they vary in size, um, and then the further east, obviously, the more metropolitan they become. On, uh, page eight and nine, it really talks about the shared governance of community mental health centers, that we aren't just a, a group of providers, we're actually identified by our counties as the mental health authority in that county. The state of Kansas gave that authority to county commissions back in the early 1960s and directed county commissions to develop community mental health center services to their, uh, citizens. And some counties took that upon themselves to do that department internally. Uh, Sedgwick County is a good example of that, that mental health center is called COMCARE and so COMCARE employees are actually county employees. It's a part of county government. The vast majority of them contracts with a, a private entity similar to what Reno County does with Horizons to provide those services. And in 1968, there was a coalition between people in Reno County and Kingman County to form together and petition the Reno County Commission and the Kingman County Commission to identify what was known then as the Mental Health Institute as the designated mental health authority in those two counties. And then over the next several years, Pratt County joined, Harper County joined and then Barber County joined. And that was going on, uh, throughout the state, which resulted in that map, uh, that we just saw as to how those services, service areas are defined. We are licensed by the state, um, we have a contract with the state, but the governance is local so we can define what the local needs are and that's facilitated by people like Carla that are on our Board of Directors that represent all of our counties. Each county has a designated representative on our board, but our board is 14 members. So we have at-large members that are based upon, um, uh, population distribution. So we have two from Pratt, two from Kingman, but then the rest are from, well, one from Barber and one from Harper and then the rest are from Reno County here. Uh, I give you the statute on page 11 that talks about the authority that county commissions have in designating the mental health authority. There was a, a monumental act in 1991, the Mental Health Reform Act, and, uh, it's talked about over the next few pages. And really what it did was close about 640 inpatient psychiatric beds and the state funneled those resources to community mental health centers to develop programs so people with a severe and persistent mental illness, as well as kids with a serious emotional disturbance, could stay in their communities rather than institutions. And that really is what we're all about now, is really serving what the state refers to as those target populations. Adults with severe and persistent mental illness and then kids that have a serious emotional disturbance. And that's really referenced on page 19, which is the last page, that, um, in 1990 there were over a thousand state psychiatric inpatient beds and now there's 340. Um, and I want to use that as a segue to, to a current issue that we're facing is, um, with the pandemic, Larnier State Hospital has a budgeted capacity of 90 beds, but they had to convert some, uh, two bedrooms to single bedrooms because of the pandemic. And so the capacity went down to 72. So they, in essence, eliminated 18 beds at Larnier. KEDAD's, when they presented their budget just in the last couple of weeks, asked the legislature to keep that bed capacity at 72. And I think many, um, county attorneys, uh, sheriff's office, ED rooms, hospitals over the western part of the state got ahold of their legislators and said, no, we need those 90 beds. Because the majority of the last couple of months, they've been over capacity and when that happens, they start a waiting list. And those people will either languish in the ED out at the hospital or in the jail, uh, which is inappropriate for them. They need the care that they, they should get in a, in a hospital setting. And the legislature supported that. So the bed capacity will go back to 90 beds once, um, the pandemic is, 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 uh, over. So we're, we're glad that the legislature, uh, supported us in that, in that initiative to keep those 18 beds because they're real critical. The, uh, next document that I provided is, is our financial statement, uh, which is, uh, for December. So it represents our first, uh, six months. And I won't go through everything, but the columns on the right are really the year-to-date. And the top lines that I drew your attention to with the highlight, uh, is the gross charges. Um, and then we have the total deductions from revenue and so those next three lines, we have the net patient revenue and then other operating revenue. The column on the far right that I highlighted is the prior year, so that was last year versus this year, and you can see that that's up, um, $956,000. And that's due to some stimulus funds that we got through the state for the pandemic. We received about $914,000 in stimulus funds and through October, November and December, we recognized that on our financial statements. So without, and then if you go down to the bottom, the last line I highlighted, we show a positive margin through the first six months of 230,000. If you back out that, uh, 914,000, we're about $727,000 in the red. And if you, uh, we don't know if there's gonna be any other stimulus funding in any, um, bills that are passed by Congress, we don't know that yet. So we, we're kind of looking at a fairly significant loss, um, and what we've had to do is make significant cuts in expenses. And with our projections now, we're looking at ending the year with about an $87,000 negative margin, uh, which would be less than 1%. And if we're able to survive this year and end that way, um, I'm not gonna be real happy about it, but I'm not gonna be distressed about it either. Uh, so that's kind of what our projection is for the, uh, year end.
Mike, I had a question.
Yes.
Um, where, where is our participation noted in your revenue?
That would be under other operating revenue.
Okay.
And what we do, uh, we run on a fiscal year from July 1 through June 30th, so we're kinda staggered with the county's calendar year. And so, um, our new fiscal year that'll begin in July has half of what each county's budgeted for calendar year 2021. We won't know what you budget for calendar year 2022 until August, September in there. And so we just basically keep that the same and we annualize that over 12 months. We divide that, uh, that we'll recognize that in 12 months.
So this is like a, s- s- um, an authori- there's a statute that authorize our participation in, 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 in mental health care?
Yes.
And, and do, do we pick that or is it, is it by referendum or we, was that a referendum originally? No, it was just?
That's a directive by the county commission.
Okay, so we just?
And she has the authority to do that.
We just participate as we wish, kinda?
Right, yes.
Okay. And how much is that per year?
Um, I think it's $730,000.
Okay.
$430,000.
430. Okay. Thanks.
The next item I want to go over is the customer satisfaction survey. I've presented that to you before and there again, I won't go through all of it, but I wanted to share a couple of items with you. And I present this to you for two reasons. One is to, um, demonstrate to you that we are concerned about what our customers think of our service, what our communities think of our service. And, um, the second thing is you should know what they think of our service. Uh, so there, there's kind of a, a double, um, rationale for providing this to you. On the, uh, second page, and I don't have these numbers and I'm sorry, Randy, you can see the number of responses, uh, that are there. And the blue on the far right is this year, this was this fall, and that was, uh, during October and you can see that the numbers were really down. Um, that's kinda when Reno County was really in its height of active COVID cases and we really think that impacted the number of people that completed the survey because we were pretty, um, significantly providing services through telehealth rather than in person. And I think that really impacted that. Where typically we're getting, you know, 800 responses, uh, we were only in that 350 range, which is still a good sample, but nothing like we, we really want.
What, so this is just a response to a question? What are?
No, these are five quarters. We do them in the spring and the fall and so the, um, one on the far left, you can barely see the legend down at the bottom, is quarter three of FY18. And then the next one is quarter two, or this, um, of FY19, the fall, then quarter four of 19, quarter two of 20 and quarter two of 21.
Maybe I'm getting ahead of you. This is just response numbers. Is there actual, um, uh, information on what the responses were?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yes. The next couple of pages are by location and who completed the survey, whether that was a parent or guardian or the person themselves, length of time people were in surveys or in, um, services. And then, Randy, there's one that lists all the questions. There it is. And you can see that they're, um, sectioned off by the first one, appointments. And for each bullet, we ask a question. Um, you received your first appointment within a reasonable amount of time. We asked them to rate us on a five-point Likert scale. So number one is no, don't agree at all, three is, uh, neutral, and then four is it was exceptional. And so all of those scores are rated on a five-point scale. We also asked questions about our telehealth appointments. That was new, but we wanted to know how did our customers feel about providing and receiving those services through telehealth? Courtesy and helpfulness of our staff, we have four questions applicable to that. Our communication with our consumers, four questions there. And then their visit with their providers, there were five questions about that, as well as our facilities. We wanted to know, did they find them easy to locate, easy to access, was parking adequate, those type of things? And then their overall satisfaction. Did our staff function in a way that's consistent with our core values, our corporate values, the quality of care? And the last question is, would you recommend us to others? Now, the, the next several pages give you those individual responses that Commissioner Friesen was asking about. The first one that says average rating by question groups is just those groups all lumped together. Uh, so all the questions in your appointments. And you can see that for this quarter, we came in at 4.43, uh, the last quarter, we were at 4.52. It looks more dramatic than the, um, on the bar graph than it actually is. That only went down 0.09%, 900ths of 1%, but it looks more significant. But we do want them as high as we can. You can see on the, next to the last one where the, uh, group of questions is, would you recommend us? Uh, that was, we see, we received 4.88 on a five-point scale, so we saw that as very positive. Then over the next several pages, it breaks those sections down into the individual responses. So you can go in and see what was the response to, appointments were at a convenient time, my follow-up appointment was easy to make, my first appointment was made in a reasonable time. And so each question, you'll have the answers and compare that to the previous four surveys that we did to see how we're doing and any, any trends that are happening. And the last one, and I'll let you review those at your leisure, but the last ones that I, uh, think are probably the most important is their overall satisfaction, uh, which went down from four point, for that whole group, from 4.6 to 4.5. But then also, would you recommend us to others? Um, of the people that answered that question, and there were 408 of them, 396 said that they would. Uh, so we see that as a strong endorsement. There's also the opportunity for people to write comments and so our leadership team reviews all of these results, as well as all the comments, to identify where do we need to direct our efforts to improve our services to our communities. Any other questions about the survey?
Uh, well, so the, the, there's clearly a difference in, in the last quarter and like you said, it's probably a little more skewed on the, on the graph tha- than, than the needed, um, well, eh, that's, is that attributable, I assume it's attributable to COVID, like specifically, is it because we're not physically working with somebody or virtually working? Wha- wha- what are the specifics that you've identified?
You know, that's what we're trying to find out. I think there's probably a myriad of answers to the question.
Yeah.
Uh, one is I think just everybody's incredibly stressed.
Yeah.
And impacted by the pandemic, so I think tolerance, patience.
Sure.
Uh, are stretched both on our customer side as well as our staff side. Um, and so I think that, that impacts that a lot. I think people have been less willing to come to the center, uh, out of, uh, some concern and fear for their safety. Although we do temperature checks on everybody that comes into our building, they all have to wear a mask, we have hand sanitizers, uh, we hired a dedicated housekeeper that just sanitizes our waiting areas, those high-traffic areas several times a day, but I think that impacted that as well.
I, I really appreciate any, any third, third-party entity that's working with us from a funding perspective, if, that, you know, brings data like this to show that you're, you're, you're doing your job and you're doing it well, like that makes me feel really good about, um, continuing to support your work. So I think this is a good example for any agency we work with, um, internal or external, um, to, to make sure that our customers are, are being taken care of and that it looks like you're doing a good job, so I appreciate that. And, uh, my only other comment since I'm already going here is, um, I, I think it would be, I would encourage you to, you know, it sounds like there, there may in fact be a pretty good gap in, in, uh, the budget next year if there's not something significant out of additional stimulus and I would encourage you to get in front of that and let us know or Randy know early so we can, we know what we're up against versus surprising us at the, at the end.
No, I will. I, I received Randy's request for funding for next year. I think that's April 10th?
I'd have to look for you.
Yeah, that's real close, the first part of April that I'd have that in front of you.
But I, yeah, I'm impressed with your, your scoring here and, and your work, so thank you for what you're doing for our community.
Thank you. I, I want to share something along that same line. We've, we were, um, have been awarded a grant through SAMSA to work be- to become a, uh, certified community behavioral health. a certified community behavioral health clinic. That's a national standard that states have to authorize, uh, that's kind of sweeping the country. Other than the last rounds of, um, grantees, there were 137 awarded throughout the country. And Horizons was able to get one of those. It's a pretty high standard. Um, I told our staff, and I kind of show my age when I say this. If we're able to achieve that standard, it's like getting the good housekeeping seal of approval. And so I have to kind of change that. It, it's real close to accreditation. I think we could meet that standard and then walk through accreditation incredibly easily. One of the first things we have to do is pretty much what Commissioner Friesen was talking about. We have to survey all of our communities. And it's really survey, surveying our communities with all of our stakeholders, as well as our customers, to try to find those gaps that we're missing. Um, you know, what does community corrections think of us? What does the jail think of? What does the Reno County Health Department think of? Hutch Clinic, the hospital, Prairie Star, as well as citizens? Are we serving all minority populations appropriately? And then we have to develop a strategic plan to meet those gaps and serve those gaps. We're also funded to develop an adult crisis stabilization unit, which this community's needed for a long time. Commissioner Friesen has set in on the stepping up council meetings, uh, already. And that, that typically comes up in there is how we're going to do that. This grant will allow us to create that. Uh, and we should have that up and operational probably within about five months, where we will try to divert people picked up by law enforcement, rather than taking them to jail or to the ED, but to a crisis stabilization unit that will work with them to try to stabilize them within 72 hours. And if we're able to do that, we'll return them to the community, wrap outpatient services around them. And if not, then they may need that higher level of care of inpatient hospital bed. But that first step is really surveying all of our communities, both our stakeholders, the people we do business with all the time, but also our customers. And then, um, we're also funding a co-responder program with that. So, uh, the police department will have ride-alongs with them so that when they respond to a call that may have a mental health issue, they'll be able to try to stabilize that situation at the site, rather than it escalating and maybe going to the emergency department or the jail. And then if they can't do it, then they would go to the crisis stabilization unit. So we're trying to fill in those gaps of care. The second initiative with the, um, the grant we received is to reduce suicide. That's been, um, increasing by virtue of the pandemic. And so we're going to commit a lot of resources to educating, um, the public, students, first responders, everyone, in how to detect early warning signs if somebody may be thinking about hurting themselves and how to respond appropriately. So we're really excited about this work. It's a great opportunity for us to, um, really transform our organization and meet the needs of our consumers and our communities even better. The last thing I have is Audra. And, uh, Audra has been working in the jail under an agreement that Horizons entered into with the county, um, three years ago, maybe, uh, where it's a joint funded program. The county pays half of Audra as well as Shane's, who's a reentry case manager. And then we pick up the other half and they're full-time in the jail and working with individuals that are released from jail with mental illness to get them housing, transportation, employment, connection to services to try to reduce that likelihood that they didn't end up back in jail. So I've asked her to, uh, bring some data with her that she'll share with you about the jail services.
Good morning. My name is Audra Goldsmith. I'm the behavioral health supervisor at the jail with Horizons. I did present, I, I think we maybe skimmed over it previously, uh, the jail 2020 versus jail 2019 data. I figured it was a little bit better to show baseline of our 2020 data versus, or excuse me, 2019 data versus our 2020 year. Last year, when I presented, that, that's kind of our first year of obtaining, um, really good concrete data of our services that we do provide. But I do want to preface that it is still kind of novice data as we're trying to find more advanced data systems and things like that to help us really get good pictures of the services we're providing there. Um, so this first graph you can see is just the amount of interactions that we had with individuals, um, through the last two years. Uh, again, that second quarter, we really had to, um, not have contact with people. The jail, uh, policies for a while kind of dropped. And so we didn't have as many services provided at the time, um, in-house, but then also in the community. So we really had to be careful with our client contact as COVID was really ramping. Um, and then I do want to point out that quarterly section. Um, it also looked like it dropped significantly, but I don't feel like it's represented very well. Uh, currently we are, we documented two separate systems. The Horizons mental health system and the jail system that we have. And so getting those numbers to mesh well and speak together, um, is very difficult. So that number might be skewed a little bit, uh, as you're looking at that graph specifically. Um, the next graph is the average length of stay for, um, SPMI or SMI people within our jail. I was really happy with this number. It is down by a four percent. Um, part of our focus, our job, our whole, you know, reason we're involved in the stepping up initiative is to reduce the length of time that mental ill, uh, individuals are having to be held in jail. And so the work that we do, um, through the mental health center and with all of our county partners, um, was really highlighted in this graph, I felt like. Um, and then down the next graph is our SPMI population that was booked in 2019 versus the SPMI population in 2020. It does show that the, the bookings within the jail went, actually went up by three percent. Um, over the last year. That could be a, a multitude of, of impacts, COVID, um, specific crimes that were being committed, uh, just a various amount of reasons. But we do see a spike in SPMI populations that were booked over that year. And then the very last graph is, this is new data. Uh, I, I wasn't able to capture that for 2019. So I implemented some new, um, tracking techniques for the year of 2020. So hopefully we can kind of see this mold over the next course of, of five, four, five, 10 years down the road. That table moved itself. It was supposed to be above the next graph. But this looks at act, access to treatment, access to services. We wanted to know how are we impacting the people that are in jail and providing them those ongoing services once they get out of jail? Um, we were able to track that we successfully connected 112 people who were released from jail to some sort of service, um, within the community mental health center at Horizons, once they got out. And then that graph just shows, uh, the specific services. Uh, 48% of people, um, were connected with their med services. Uh, 4% got intakes at Horizons. 27% got reconnected with their therapy services at Horizons. So our goal is that we continue to see this number go up. These services increase. Um, we're doing that by different process improvements, uh, within Horizons Mental Health Center with our case manager, um, and as well as the case managers that work specifically from, from the center and not in the jail. So, um, I thought it was nice to just depict 19, 2019 and 2020 data since, yeah, last year it was just really fresh and there was nothing to kind of compare it to. So. Any questions on that?
I had a question, Audra. So when, when, when we were, that first meeting, it's the stepping up council, is that right?
Yes, sir.
When was the first meeting I was in? Was that in December?
We meet every, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I feel like it was September or October, maybe.
So at the time, it, it seemed as though there were some, in, in, in a few slides up, there was, there was a discussion of, or, or a data point related to how long, um, these people stay in jail.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And, and this is, i- is it, is it fair to say what this is saying is this is how long it takes us to, um, process them out of jail and into a facility that can handle their, their mental care?
No, this is just, this is just specifically them being incarcerated and, and post-release.
So, w- so, okay, so it's, it's 18 days. What, what is going on in those 18 days?
Sure. Um, so somebody that is currently in the jail needing mental health services is, um, I'm hoping to get them connected with their med provider and get their mental health medications, um, going and stabilized while they're in jail. Um, meeting with myself for brief therapeutic interventions. We, when COVID is not around, we have groups that they attend, um, along with other all inmates. Um, and then we also provide them those reentry services with our case manager. So meet with them, discuss the barriers they have when they're in the community and what that looks like and, and the things that they're going to be needing when they get out to be more successful.
So is it, is it fair to say these, these individuals are, um, that, they have a mental illness that, um, has reached a point to where the, the police department or the sheriff's department has had to intervene and essentially detain them in jail until we can, um, you can do your work and try to, you know, put them back on their meds or get them the help they need? And so that's the time at which it takes to kind of get them back on their feet? Is, is that a fair statement or?
Um, yes, I think that's a fair statement. Um, I, I think that you were on the call when we had, um, discussing, um, some of the barriers that we have within, um, the legal system and just communication on getting some of these individuals through the court system. Unfortunately, when it comes down to specific individuals that are very severely mentally ill, further education and advisement on, um, appropriate kind of courses of action, if they need to go to the hospital, if they're not really fit for jail, their competency to stand trial and be able to, to move through their legal process. Those are all barriers that really impact the length of time that they're going to be staying in jail. Um, so with a stepping up initiative, we have really been working on how, as, as stakeholders and, you know, community partners, how can we make this better? How can we better our communication? Um, how can we better our response to these services? Um, and, and implement, implementation for maybe some new processes across the board? So we've really been working on that diligently.
Well, and, and that's what I was getting to was it, it seemed as though that first meeting that you guys were maybe at, at a, a low point in just frustration and, and the system and its ability to process these people efficiently and in the sense they were, you know, on one side, it seemed like you, you had, these, these people were, were s- suffering. And, and on another side, staff and, you know, jail deputies were frustrated and kind of suffering on the other end of just an inability to help these people? Have we made progress in that?
You know, I, I would hope that, um, maybe we would come across more as showing our passion for that.
Sure. Yeah, that's probably, I'm not using the right, right words. But I just, it seemed like people were stressed out.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it, it really, it, it, it can be intense to watch this happen to individuals. These are people's lives that we're dealing with. Um, and, and to me, it really shows the compassion that we have throughout multiple stakeholders in the community on really trying to affect change and make this problem better. Um, we are making some great progress with that. We actually formulated a, a subcommittee within stepping up with different court officials and judges, um, to talk about, in corrections, to, to talk about the problem and to talk about ways that we can all work together on, uh, really making an impact and doing some things, uh, for the better for those folks. So, um, we, we all get passionate in that, in our initiative, in our council. Um, and it really is great to work with those people that, that care and make a difference.
Sure, and I was not in any way devalue, devaluing what you guys were doing. It just seemed like, um, it was a struggle at the time. So you're saying that things are moving in the right direction?
Yeah, we've been having some really fantastic meetings, um, with the judges and court staff and been making some very good progress.
Is there anything this commission can do in that effort?
Um, I, nothing off the top of my head at this point. Um, I'm not sure if down the road, there might be different policies or different things to support. But, um, at this time, I don't think there's anything specific.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
I might add, I, I think your ongoing participation in the stepping up council is very welcome. Uh, the other thing I would say is there's a new initiative within KADAS to, um, broaden stepping up councils. Reno County is referred to as an innovator county, which means that, uh, we can assist other counties in developing stepping up councils. There's only three innovator counties in the state. Reno County, Douglas County and Lawrence, and Johnson County. So that, that really speaks to Audra's effort. The problem with that, though, is that the agency that KADAS is contracting with, um, to develop stepping up councils recruited her away from us. So she's tendered her resignation. And so we, we're already interviewing people, uh, to replace her. But it really is a testament to how much work she's done and how it's recognized on a state level. I don't want to say she did her job too good, um, but I wish she wasn't leaving. Uh, but it really is a testament to what, what we've done. And Reno County really is, in my opinion, way ahead of the curve. Uh, really doing some really good work with keeping people with mental illness out of jail. And I think our new initiative is going to enhance that even more. I just wanted to add that.
Well, thanks for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Mike, I've got, uh, one hopefully quick question for you. Uh, the telehealth part of, uh, you've been doing certainly because of COVID. Can you put a, a feeling on there about what percentage that's as good as eyeball to eyeball?
Um, it really comes down to an individual level. Uh, I remember early in the pandemic, we had, uh, an elderly gentleman, uh, that received medication services from us. And, uh, we had to teach him how to use Zoom and, and get through all of that. And then he told us, this is wonderful. This is just great. I'm never coming back to your clinic. Uh, so he, he just liked it. Other people say, no, I want to see my provider in person. Um, and so we're at a point now that we really give them the choice as to what they want to do. Uh, whether they want to, um, stay home and do that, whether they want to come to our clinic. Uh, and with a lot of our population, transportation is a problem. And telehealth has provided a nice solution to that.
So you feel that that'll have an aspect of your treatment even after the pandemic?
I do. Um, you know, we were probably doing five to seven percent telehealth before the pandemic. I'm thinking post-pandemic, that'll be in the 20 to 25% range.
Thank you. I have just one other question. Are you seeing more youth, uh, in the last six, eight, nine months than you saw before? Or because of the school situation? Or, or, uh, just how does that, you see that?
The school situation has created problems for us to have access to kids. Um, you know, when they aren't in school, it's hard for us to locate them. And, um, during the height of the active cases, uh, we had some trepidation about having staff go into people's homes, uh, when we didn't know if they were positive or if we didn't know they were safe environments. So I, I think the need is still there. I think that there's, um, more problems that developed. And I think over the next six months, we're going to see a, a large increase in those services.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate the very informative, as you always do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Randy? You ready for the peak? Daniel, you need a break or?
Ah, I'm just gonna blow my nose here.
Okay, on this is the Granica software PEAK Agenda Management. Last year, at the end of last year, there was a special session in November where you guys, where the commission had a chance to look at a demo of this software, the PEAK Agenda. And when I go to a couple of pages down here, that kind of gives an overview of PEAK ma- And when I go to a couple pages down here, that kind of gives an overview of Peak, the Peak Agenda. They say that it can help with staff time, that it, you know, is more efficient in agendas. This is kind of why we're looking at it, put it online. It would allow directors, the public, anyone with an agenda request to go online, log in and put a request and then a a process for different supervisors than myself and maybe commission approving what gets on the agenda. This would also allow the commissioners to view the agenda as it's being prepared. So, you can, you know, instead of maybe on a Thursday or Friday getting the whole packet, you could go in and look a couple days earlier to see what's going to be coming on the agenda. Has iLegislate, which that does give the the board a chance to keep track of all agendas, past ones also, take notes in online in in the system. So, you can bookmark items and go back and research on your own without having to have a paper copy or multiple PDFs. It'll all be on one system. With, at the session, special session, the commission also saw eComment. And I believe it was requested that that be included in the proposal when it comes before you. So, what eComment does is it allows online participation in the meetings by the public. Residents can review agenda item details and indicate their position on items and make notes in case you guys want to see those, or you can go back and see them after the fact also. The, I'll go back to the memo. The total cost for Peak Agenda Management and eComment would be nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars a year. There's no upfront costs. That's covered. So, this is what it would cost every year. Right now, we're paying eight thousand sixty-three dollars for media manager and live manager. That's what's currently on. It's also with Granicus. This would tie in and work well with, they complement each other. The additional option that you guys reviewed in November was the captioning. And that'd be for the hearing impaired, there would be captioning on online to where they could read what's going on. This is fifteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars a year. So, it wasn't in the original, I guess, recommendation from staff, more of a discussion whether that's something the county commission wants to go with. We probably could find the money for that, but that is a a pretty big hit that wasn't budgeted for. The nine thousand eight hundred and forty is a lot easier to manage with our budget.
Does this go onto YouTube, you know, like the video today? Doesn't YouTube caption on its own?
Yes, and they charge for that, so.
YouTube does?
Yes.
I think it's important that we have accessibility, but if we have it via another means, it is.
Right now, it's it's not being provided at all. So, we'd have to pay for it one way or the other, whether it's with YouTube or directly through Granicus. The timeline, if this is approved, would, they would start work, immediately work on the back end. We would go live in the end of April.
How how much is the YouTube fee, you know?
We looked at it sometime last year. I don't recall the amount, I can get that to you, though.
I think we looked at this and discussed this at an earlier session, work session. And after seeing all the paperwork today, I I kind of like the idea of of looking at, and it's not that much more than what we're already paying for a system. And I think this would save time and and energy from staff as well as gives us us an opportunity to follow the future agenda as it's being formed. And so, I I I believe that in my thoughts that would like to see this, try the Peak Agenda with eComment. And that way, it helps lots of people in the public forum type to area of public comments be able to send in their public comments, just like telehealth. I think that would be an advantage. Randy, didn't you indicate that you've used this out in Penny County?
We used, it was owned by Granicus, it was a different software, but it was online, didn't have all the features that this has, but.
Something very similar.
It was very similar, and it made preparing agendas a lot easier than what they are now.
And you felt like it was a appropriate step to take?
Yes.
Why don't we approve the first part and let's continue to review how we do the hearing impaired?
You know, I was, I just pulled up the planning commission's meeting on YouTube for for the eighteenth of February. And I just clicked on the closed captioning. I think it's just a function in YouTube where it just automatically, because I'm just watching it and it's, it's got full closed captioning on it.
Okay, yeah, one time when we asked them, they ran a chart, but maybe there is features that are available for it.
I'm I'm in support of of item one, and and I think if we review what what the closed captioning is, like Commissioner Sellers said, I think there's there's free options out there. Is it, is it worth, you know, in our budget, another ten thousand a year isn't 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 a lot. But it is, we, you know, you do this so often and and, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there starts to.
Adds up the real money, doesn't it?
Like, is it worth just going and seeing, hey, can we cut the budget ten thousand somewhere? You know, just to, just as a a an exercise? Like, is that, is that fair to, is that is that hard to do? Like, is it, is it?
For this kind of money, ten thousand, we probably could find line items that have cushions that we could cut, you know, so that's that's not hard. If it was fifty or a hundred thousand, it gets more challenging.
I think it would look good to the public if if we said, yeah, we added ten here, but we're going to save ten, ten there. But I'm I'm in support, and I'd, if we're ready for a motion, I'd be happy to make it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Randy, do you have any other highlights or thoughts about time saving with regard to this?
There, there's a return on investment that Granicus provided, but that was, those are just kind of in the air gases.
Sales?
Sales, so I didn't want to include those because we don't, we can't really quantify those.
From your standpoint, I guess I'm asking from your standpoint, not not from.
From salespeople, yes.
From a marketing factor.
I think it's going to save a good amount of time for Shonda and I and then other directors when they prepare agendas. So, I think it will be a time savings and make the agenda preparation more efficient.
And and commissioners will have the same tool, like we could request an item.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I I'd make a motion to approve county administrator's recommendation as as recommended on agenda item ninety.
Question of that, is that just for item one?
Yeah, his his recommendation is option number one and to discuss option number two.
Okay, I second that.
Okay.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve item number one on the options as presented by staff. Any discussion? Just want to know if that takes time, if 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 we can, two of us up here who are a little challenged with some of this.
Would speak for yourself, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just going by what you said before, Commissioner. I'll speak for myself.
No, I would agree with you, the commission will need a training session.
Yes. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a five-minute recess?
That's exactly where I was headed.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do a five-minute recess. We will take up the meeting again at ten forty-five. Some announcements here, and then you can follow up. We, pardon?
Now I can hear you. The microphone just came on.
Back there, okay, thank you. Procedures for this would be that we would ask you to, one speaking, one waiting, so as to save time. And then you can rotate in and out, and there will be no questions, so that way it won't take your time. And that way, we won't have to allocate two or three minutes for questions and so forth and continue on with the process. So, we appreciate your waiting for us to get done with the commission meeting and look forward to what you have to to say. Daniel, would you like to ask any other things?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and you 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 hit on it, and and I guess I have a little different opinion. I'm, I'm going to have a hard time not asking questions. I know, I know we want to limit the time, but I think it may, may may be a bad idea to preclude the commission from from asking a question if clarification is needed on a statement.
Would, we we talked about this earlier, would going through the thirty minutes and then you can write down anything you have to say? And if the people would wait, you could say, have a question afterwards, that they could wait and then answer that after the thirty minutes of each one?
That sounds like a good idea. Maybe if we let let the first group go and then ask questions and then the second group go and ask questions, would that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay.
I just was trying to come up with a way not to impede and and follow since we're looking at that, so.
Thank you.
If that's all right with with you, Commissioner Sellers? Okay, we'll.
Do you want to clear something on that ticket? Does that lead into the thirty minutes at all?
No.
No.
Okay, just want to make sure.
No, the thirty minutes will be allowed, then questions, if there's any questions, and that'll come after that. And then we'll go into the next thirty minutes. Is that what you?
And, you know, well, when you're done, you say, I yield the balance of my time. Right, Senator?
I I I agree with Commissioner Friesen that that's an appropriate way to to do this, but I would hope that our questions are such that they can be answered by either the pro or con people in a very short period of time, and it's not a prolonged dialogue.
Okay.
Because I think the reason that we're doing this thirty and thirty is to negate essays.
Yeah, I I think that's fine. So, that's the way we'll proceed with this. And so, basically, we're starting at ten minutes till eleven. So, oh, the other thing I was asked, there may be some changes in speakers, so if you would, if you change in speakers, please spell your last name so our clerk can get that recorded, all right? Go ahead, Senator Kerr.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Dave Kerr, and that's K E R R. Let me take you back to two thousand and eight for a moment, May of two thousand and eight. Mr. Kevin Hazel visited Hutch. We were one of thirteen communities being visited on that trip, and those thirteen were winnowed from more than a hundred who had responded to a request for proposals. In September of that year, Mr. Hazel brought his entire team of eight to visit Hutchinson to further evaluate us as the possible site for the Siemens North American Wind Nocelle manufacturing facility. It happened to be Governor's Day at the fair. And the governor agreed to meet with the team, and she assured them not only that Kansas is a very windy state, but that we believe in renewable energy and we want to see it grow in our state. Then the team left and went to visit the other four finalist communities. Eventually, there was the phone call. Finally, after months and months of negotiations and work, we were going to find out our fate. My phone was running low, so the lieutenant governor and I took that call in a parking lot in Topeka. They told us they liked Hutch, they would like to come, but the number two community, which I believe was Sioux City, Iowa, had one million dollars more on the table as incentives than we did. So, could we, they just weren't sure that senior management was going to buy it that way. So, could we give that a little thought, and they'd like to talk to us again at eleven o'clock in the morning? So, after a visit with the governor at Cedar Crest late that evening, we were ready. Governor played it well. She said, if you'll commit to Hutch now, we'll find that extra million dollars. Well, at the two thousand and nine State Fair, we had a grand, great groundbreaking for the new Siemens facility. I believe the effort to bring Siemens Wind Nocelle Manufacturing to Hutchinson was a great example of intergovernmental cooperation. The city worked extremely hard at it. The county, often represented by Mr. O'Sullivan, worked tirelessly on it, and the state was a huge help. So, over the months of planning and negotiating, I think I was in every meeting or on every phone call. And I don't recall a single time anyone said to Siemens, we'd really like to have those jobs here, but we're not so excited about the towers. In fact, we might come up with setbacks and covenants so severe that you probably won't be able to sell any units here. Now, it's two thousand twenty-one. To this point, we can say that everyone has completely fulfilled their obligations under that deal. Siemens, now Siemens Gomesa, has created two hundred and sixty well-paying jobs. Their benefits are first-class, almost European level of benefits. Because it's two thousand and twenty-one, this is the year that that beautiful facility will come on to the tax rolls after the ten-year payment. And Reno County workers have built enough Nocelles out there that they would have provided electricity for every home in Kansas and two adjoining states. So, what should you do? Well, I think it's just what you have done. Charge the planning commission with listening to both sides, consult with experts, and come up with the best compromise possible. They took their roles seriously, and I think they have. It's neither surprising nor unreasonable that people who are going to speak in a little while have expressed concern about noise and shadow flicker at their homes. But you can assure them, they have, they have been heard. What the planning commission has presented to you is more restrictive than in any county in Kansas that has a wind project. I think we should be extremely reluctant and careful and cautious to make any significant changes. And as an example, fifty percent increase in setback provision would be significant and probably kill any future project. Good luck in your deliberations. Our reputation as a reliable business partner may very well be at stake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just got to leave the room. For record, William Thacker, T H A C K E R. Thirty years, a lot happens in thirty, in three decades. Thirty years, a lot happens in thirty, in three decades. Thirty years from now, I'll be over 60 years old with my daughter, and my daughter will be 30, and Reno County will still exist. When I'm 60, talking to my 30-year-old daughter, I can only hope we are talking about pivotal moments in our county's history regarding the future of economic development and progress for prosperity. I hope we are not talking about what could have been, or looking around at neighboring counties, asking, "Why not us?" Good morning. My name is William Thacker, and I am supporting the regulations proposed by the Reno County Planning Commission in regards to the commercial wind energy conversion systems. I'm also representing the Reno County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development of Reno County, who represents 750 members, over 20,000 employees of those companies who support and want to keep our tax base growing while simultaneously keeping property taxes in check. The reason I brought up 30 years was that is the timeframe, the report for economic impact conducted by Docking Institute of Public Affairs provided. Thirty years of sustainable, predictable, diversified income for landowners. Thirty years of economic impact of over $130 million. Thirty years of operational phase economic impact to the public sector of over $32 million. When considering an area for development, there are four basic considerations: correct wind speeds, access to transmission affordably, negotiable land, and an offtake customer. In addition, the feasibility and effect of these wind turbines needs to be conducted. Your own Planning Commission has already gone through great lengths to take that account and recommendations that align with the best practices from other counties and states to ensure the regulations factor in, most notably, the setback restrictions, limits on decibel levels, and shadow flicker. Laying in additional amendments only further regulates and deters any future economic activity for an already-established industry in our county. Regulations set the table for what is or is not possible for a future project. If a developer cannot, if, if a developer cannot develop a large enough footprint to be economically feasible, they won't pursue a project in Reno County today or in the future. Ten years ago, we supported Siemens Gomesa, which has become a pillar, pillar of our economic development target industry. With further regulations, Reno County could create additional unintended consequences that halting wind development in our county could have a direct impact on jobs at Siemens. It also sets the stage on a national level as to if Reno County is open for business or not. Why would we effectively shut the door on the most obvious natural resource for energy by being the most restrictive county for wind in the entire state of Kansas? The proposed Commercial Wind Energy Conversion System ordinance is at least comparable to other Kansas counties in most categories of restrictions proposed, but as a whole, it would be the most restricted, restrictive adopted in Kansas to date. Thirty years, a lot will happen in the next 30 years. As the entire world looks to become more environmentally conscious, and young people look for more sustainable, renewable energy, what perception will our county leave for generations to come? Are we open for business or not? Do we want collaboration and participation or not? Will this be a conversation I'll have with my daughter in 30 years as to what have, or what could have been or not? Will young people be proud to call Reno County home or not? Keep Reno County open for business and adopt the careful recommendations your Planning Commission provided as written, without continuing to layer more non-recoverable obstacles to overcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Good job.
Okay.
Hi.
State your name and address.
Sure. My name is Mica Welch, W-E-L-C-H. I'm here today representing Siemens Gomesa Renewable Energy at 1,000 Commerce Street. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak today. I am a U.S. Communications Manager, and I also live in Hutchinson since 2008. Our plant manager sends his regrets for not being able to be here in person today. However, I'm here, and I have been dedicated to this process over the last few years. I've spent dozens of hours attending these county meetings at various venues around town regarding this various, this specific topic. So today, I want to share with the Commissioners and the public that I urge the commission to accept the zoning regulations carefully crafted by the Planning Commission volunteers. For this commission to accept these regulations as currently written would not be done so blindly. These regulations are the product of the significant, hard work of the volunteer Planning Commissioners, county staff, and the countless community members on both sides of the issue who provided enormous input in its development. These volunteers did their job, and they did it well. So to accept them would be demonstrating faith in that process. These volunteers carefully crafted the zoning regulations, and they deserve your support for their significant, hard work and time commitment. As written by Mr. Friesen in his op-ed piece in the Hutch News this weekend, he stated that Reno County has been a focal point for wind energy development in Kansas. He mentioned our community's partnership with Siemens Gomesa, job growth, as well as the significant secondary benefits, like diversifying our workforce, stimulating, supporting businesses, and strengthening our manufacturing base. I was so proud to read those comments because I agree completely. I would also like to add, for every wind farm that doesn't get built in Kansas, or the United States for that matter, means there is less market demand to help sustain our wind turbine assembly facility right here in Reno County. I was proud and encouraged to read that he feels it only makes sense for this county to continue to embrace this vital industry that has produced so much for our community. So please know that if this group continues to increase setback numbers, this will directly impact our Siemens Gomesa facility in Reno County, not only on the local project level in the near term, but also in the long run. It sets a dangerous precedent that has been analyzed and used by wind opposition groups across the state of Kansas and the country, with the mindset, if you can stop a wind farm in Reno County, the home of a wind turbine manufacturer, you can prevent a wind farm anywhere, and this is a very real phenomenon. For your awareness, I would like to point to the impact that Ohio's setback requirement has had on development in their state. After a law was passed in 2014, their setback requirement is now 1,300 feet. Since that law was passed seven years ago, only two wind farms have been built in Ohio. So again, I urge you to approve the zoning regulations as currently written. To do otherwise sets a very dangerous precedent that Reno County is closed for business to the wind industry. So please, let's not be the next Ohio. Thank you.
Thanks, Mica.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Tuftel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce. Our chamber, as you know, as part of our public policy agenda and economic development mission, supports wind energy and the opportunity it brings to Kansas as one of the top-ranked states for wind energy production. Last year, we provided testimony to the Reno County Planning Commission against more restrictive regulation, but encouraged that that group work closely with industry experts to align regulation in a way that would keep Reno County open for business in wind energy. We believe that the Planning Commission studied the subject well, and has presented a thorough plan for wind energy regulation with input from public comment, expert testimony, and staff over months of deliberation. The end result is a regulation that would allow for careful development and protect citizens' rights as well. The Planning Commission carefully considered these many factors. In their draft, though it represents what would be considered more restrictive than most Kansas counties who host wind projects today, when combining all of these factors as a whole, still has recommended a plan that we can support. However, we do not support the edits that were recently made to it in regards to setbacks. If you implement a 3,000-foot setback, you would officially make Reno County the most restrictive county in Kansas for wind energy. If you do, the dangerous message you might be sending is this: Reno County, Kansas, home to Siemens Gomesa Renewable Energy, one of the first Kansas counties to benefit from wind component manufacturing, thanks to the hard work of Dave Kerr and previous community leaders, has now passed the most restrictive wind energy regulations in the state? Is that the message that you want to send to Siemens Gomesa and their employees? Is that the message you want to send to young people choosing where to stake their livelihoods? That Reno County has become a model for how to stop wind energy development? I hope not. Today, I want to address three key points: economic development strategy in Reno County, the economic impact of wind, and the voices of the thousands of people in Reno County and the family farms who do want to keep Reno County open for wind. Good economic development policy encourages promotion of our natural resources, and one of our most robust natural resources right here in Kansas obviously is wind. Our state has benefited from wind energy over the last two decades. Since 2001, 41 wind farms with over 3,200 turbines have operated in harmony across 30 Kansas counties. Reno County should be one of those. In 2019, over 5,000 Kansans were employed in the wind industry, in many good jobs: construction jobs, technicians and operators, and even the manufacturing jobs you heard about from Mica. In today's economy, promoting our natural resources as a means for long-term economic development is imperative. Reno County stands to lose out in the future of economic development opportunity, and the Reno County landowners are missing out on this way to diversify their income stream from their own land if we become this restrictive. While we're not here today to talk about the former Pretty Prairie Wind Project, I think it is important to look at the future developments through the lens of economic impact. The Docking Institute at Fort Hays State University projected that the economic impact of that 220-megawatt wind farm would have had a positive economic return to Reno County of $132 million. That includes $50 million in payments to landowners, family farms right here in Reno County, the direct jobs and indirect jobs, and the $39 million in additional tax revenue for Reno County. That kind of local investment would have provided a tremendous lift to Reno County residents, not to mention to the coffers of Reno County government. We don't often see projects of this economic magnitude come our way. They weren't seeking a tax exemption or incentive, they would have negotiated a payment in lieu of tax agreement that would have benefited Reno County taxpayers for years to come. I've heard some ask, "Why not western Reno County?" I would propose that you take a look at the wind resource maps and the availability of transmission lines in the western portion of Reno County, and draw your own conclusions as to why, namely, Quavera setbacks, the varying wind resources, and the lack of transmission line interconnect points. I brought copies of those maps if you wish to see them. The cost to bring more transmission lines to Reno County is tremendous, and I'm not saying that we can't get there someday, but today, it would be more costly to develop a wind farm in western Reno County. The family farms who were part of the Pretty Prairie Wind Project deserve for their voices to be heard too. Last week, Lois Schlickow, who you know has been active in agribusiness, K-96 development, and has owned land in Reno County for generations, shared a letter with me that she wrote to you Commissioners on February 16th. In it, she cited her disappointment in the proposed 3,000-foot setbacks, ignoring the recommendations of the Planning Commission. She sees wind energy as a way to stabilize and expand the county tax base and family farms. In closing, she said, I quote, "The ramifications of the Commissioners' decisions on wind energy will impact our county and residents for decades to come." She is right. Your decision on this topic will, one way or another, impact our county for decades to come. We hope you will make a clear choice to keep Reno County open for wind. Today, we ask you to adopt the proposed regulations as written by the Reno County Planning Commission regarding commercial wind energy conversion systems without further restrictions. Please help Reno County move forward without continuing to layer on even more burdensome regulation. Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Larry Preisser, who owns land near Haven, and he is going to speak to his interest in keeping Reno County open for wind. Thank you.
Deborah, I'd take that transmission app if you got it. Thanks.
My name's Larry Preisser, P-R-E-I-S-S-E-R. I live in Cunningham, Kansas. I have land in western Reno County mostly, but my family farm that I grew up on was born on here. We got approximately 600 acres in the wind farm footprint, and I've lived here for 70, I was born here 70 years ago. And I mostly want to say what it did to our country at Pratt County and Kingman County. The wind farms came in out there, and they built new bridges, they built good roads. In Kingman County alone, they give money to the road fund every year. They ask Kingman how much money they need, they have a set amount. Last year, Kingman asked for more money, they wrote them a check. Pratt County, I farm in Pratt County too. Pratt County, I know the road boss that runs all the roads in Pratt County. He says anytime they need money to fix something, and they gave them money the whole time, they get it. They also gave the city of Pratt $10 million to help lower taxes on the farmland, on account of the wind farm being there. And they have good roads. I farm around those wind farms. One of my houses is a half a mile from one. I wasn't lucky enough to get one, but I take all I can get in western Kansas, western Reno County, if you want to bring them out there. But I think we need these here. A lot of this land here is poor land, it's hard to make a living on it, and I have two sons farming. They're fifth-generation farmers. My grandfather was born on some of this land that was, the wind farm would be on. I guarantee you, we need this for Reno County. We need to lower our land taxes, and I think this will help, and I've heard nothing but good. I also know people in North Dakota have wind farms. They've retired on them, and it's just a good thing for everybody. As far as the noise, you can drive right up to one, you can't hardly hear it running if the wind's not blowing. If the wind's blowing, you can hear a little bit. Sometimes a lot if the wind's blowing real hard. But, but that, that noise is a joke. We've got used to them out there. I mean, we don't even see them. So I, I agree with your committee of the setback. If we get longer setbacks, you're going to lose the wind farm. You'll lose all of ours, and we want it. And I have a lot of farmers out here, south of Haven. They should have been here, but this wasn't advertised very good. I happened to hear it on the radio, and I called them all last night, and they figured it was going to be a closed meeting on account of COVID. They didn't want to come. I said, "Well, I'm going." So I appreciate your help here, and I think you need to keep things the way they are, the setbacks. And I'm going to tell you, it'll do more good than bad here. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Alan Claus Anderson. I think I'm on the list, but I'm the vice-chair of the Energy Practice Group at the Paulsonelli Law Firm. I work out of the Kansas City office, but we have projects and offices throughout the country, over 900 and some lawyers. I'm also adjunct professor of law at University of Kansas Law School, and I teach renewable energy law, practice, and policy. So this is an area I look at quite a bit. And to set the table here, when we think about zoning, there's a first threshold question of what permitted uses do you want in the county? And in this case, there's been a determination that wind energy is compatible with the county uses. From that point, the core mission of the zoning process is to determine what regulations are necessary for the health and safety of that use. And we have to be cautious there at that point, because every decision you make from that point impacts property rights. As you heard in the speaker before, a move of even a few hundred feet will mean someone's property will be impacted, and they will be, lose the right to use that property as they deem appropriate. So a determination here of a few hundred feet is not a small decision. It is going to tell someone, "You're now eliminated from using your property rights within commerce," and that's the core essence of what property rights are, is the individual making the decision how they want to use them within, in this case, the zoning that has determined what's necessary for within, in this case, the zoning that has determined what's necessary for health and safety. In this situation, you're reviewing months and months of work by the Planning and Zoning Commission. You're also fortunate because in Reno County, you have robust staff with excellent qualifications to help that process at the planning and zoning stage. So that process went before you, before them, and they were able to come up with these determinations of what they thought met the health and safety issues. But it's going to be in relation, again, how your citizens are able to use their property. The process envisions, and we have to remember, because we're impacting people's property rights, there's due process requirements of that. And so the statutory framework in Kansas is as it took place here. It goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they review the ordinances. They take in information, good information, bad information, expertise, non...misinformation, excellent information, all of that, they take in public comment. That body, along with its staff, then is taxed with the job to go through that information, sift through it, and determine what they should look at for coming forward to you all with ordinances. That's the body that has the contemplative process there, and they did that. But they also then, after meeting health, safety, and welfare, they can't lose sight of the property rights because each of these changes impacts people's property rights. At the end of their process, the Planning and Zoning Commission, collectively, they put forth to you draft ordinances. And those draft ordinances, you've heard, essentially represent the most comprehensive and restrictive ordinances when looked at a whole, as you'll find in the state of Kansas. Most have far, far less restrictions than these. So this is a very robust, from a restriction standpoint, set of ordinances. And why does that matter? And the reason why that matters, in Kansas, we don't have to guess as what protects health, safety, and welfare. We have twenty years of operating wind projects in the state, forty-plus projects, something like thirty different counties that have participated in wind projects. And though each and a hundred percent of those projects have been the success story where they're hosted. In fact, where you'll find projects are located, they want more projects. And they don't go anywhere near adding these type of restrictions into their ordinances because they've seen the impact in play. Ford County has, I think now, seven projects with more on the way. They've not moved their restrictions anywhere near this. You know, we've heard about Pratt County. Pratt County had a project, added another project. We've heard of other projects. And so what we found is, we can...we don't have to guess in Kansas what happens. We know based on that. So now you know what the health, safety, and welfare requirements are. Now, it's when we add more to that, now it's a decision to impact people's property rights and take them away because that was what will happen. Further restrictions will do that. Because it needs to be remembered, it's not a regulation of a particular project, and it's not a regulation of next year itself. It's actually a regulation of your citizens and the use of their property. Is it done?
Thank you. All right, now, as the commission agreed on, are there some questions that you would like to bring a speaker back in to ask?
I have no questions.
Daniel?
Yeah, I've got...I think I got maybe one or two from Mr. Anderson.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, or Anderson, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, sorry, you got...didn't get a finish there. Kind of running on a tight schedule today.
Understood.
I did have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Appreciate you being here. So how do we reconcile the property rights and due process rights of non-participating landowners with those of participating landowners?
Right. And I think that's a fair question. You're going to hear from people that are going to come forward today and say they want further restrictions. And in fact, what they're going to ask for are things that they know would end the project. In this case, as in other uses, there's nothing that doesn't have some impact. Siemens Company has some impact. Every use has some impact. It's the balancing of those things. In this case, again, what we have is history of the other forty-plus projects in the state of Kansas. And what they found is, in much less restrictive conditions, it didn't have negative impact on those property owners. So if you hear from what really represents...you've got to remember, in Reno County, I think there's sixty-seven thousand people in the county, and you'll hear from a small portion, and relative to that number, of people who are against it. What we can look to are those other counties and the other forty projects to determine, "How did it work? Is there something that is necessary to really balance those?" And the answer, in twenty-two decades of history, is there's not. This does balance that more than enough.
So, I mean, it seems like we're boiling it down to value or economics. I mean, are there...you know, on one side, I hear your argument that, you know, well, the value doesn't decrease. On the other side, I hear the argument that, you know, people should be able to do whatever they want with their property. And I think what you're saying is, there's a balance there, right? And...but I guess my other question is... So some counties have put a full moratorium on wind, and I think they've seemed to find a balance there. And so how does...how do you reconcile that, where a county feels as though the health, safety, and welfare of their county is so significant that they're going to completely ban wind and impact the property rights of those who want to develop on their property?
Yeah, and there are a couple of examples, in fact, more recently, where there are counties that have done that, determined we're just going to ban wind. And I would suggest that that's a choice they can make. I would suggest, just because another county did something, doesn't make it a good choice. And I wouldn't take those counties as examples that a county like Reno County should follow. Because what we are looking at is, there is a property rights issue, and in a zoning county, it is fair to strike some balances. It has been determined, as I understand, that this would be a use that the county has determined should be permitted. And in that case, then it is determining what's related to health, safety, and welfare. What you can't do in a zoning process, I think, is please everyone one hundred percent of the time. We won't get there for anything. And so if we get to the point where a smaller...a small portion of the sixty-plus thousand in Reno County make a determination and can block something that's clearly a valuable use within the county and has been shown by the other forty projects, I think you go down a situation where Reno County could be harmed directly. But then also, for any further companies looking to locate in Reno County, I think they'd have to be very cautious that this would not be a place that they could have consistent treatment.
Yeah, I completely get the economic arguments, you know. But I think your points related to direct impact are...and the legal requirements we have are valid on both sides. So appreciate you being here today. Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Hold on, did you have some questions?
I have one person I'd like to call back in.
Who are you going to call?
Mr. Thacker.
Yeah, let's do that. I might have one for him.
One for him, too.
I just have one question, kind of a statement question. You have quoted the Docking Institute's economic impact study?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware of Wichita State University's economic impact study?
I am not aware.
Okay, next area paid for the Docking Institute's economic impact study. The county worked with Wichita State University to do an economic impact study. There's approximately a hundred...I just wanted to know if you were aware of that other study because that's been quoted several times. And the difference between the two was a hundred-and-thirty-one million and about eleven million with Wichita State. So I just wanted to know if you were aware of that, and if not, maybe we could study that, Wichita State Economic Impact Study.
Is your question answered?
Yeah, I'm just curious if you'd seen that economic study by Wichita State. It was quite a variance.
Okay.
Okay.
I have not.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think Daniel had one.
I...I don't think I...I don't think I do. I appreciate Will very much that you were here today representing.
Certainly do.
Thank you. Do you need anyone else?
No.
I don't think so.
Mr. Sellers?
Nope.
Daniel, do you have any other questions to anyone?
I don't think so. Thank you.
And I don't either. Okay. So we're looking at eleven twenty-seven, back to the twenty-sevens, aren't we? And so begin yours, whoever first.
Morning. I have a document. Would it be acceptable to hand to you, Commissioner?
I'm fine with it.
I also have an extra one. Anyone like the extra one?
Good morning, commissioners. I appreciate your time today, and thank you for allowing us to present today. Mine's labeled economical impact. I'm no college...
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sorry, absolutely. My name is Jason Seiwert, S-E-I-W-E-R-T. And I live at one-four-two-zero-two East Maple Grove Road. And I am a member of the Reno County Citizens for Quality of Life. And mine's topic is economical impact. I'm not from a college or university. I don't have no fancy backgrounds. I just have real-life statistics that are currently happening within our county. On February ninth, two thousand twenty-one, the Reno County Commission was given a petition with five hundred-plus signatures with our proposed compromise for regulations. If these regulations are not accepted, then Reno County Citizens for Quality of Life propose a full ban of southeast Reno County for all property, east of Highway fourteen to the Reno-Cedric County line, and from ninety-six Highway South to the Reno-Cedric-Keman County line. Let's be honest, it's all about the dollar to both the developer and the county. A recent article in the Hutch Paper by Mr. Sellers helps confirm this, and multiple people speaking prior. Back in February two thousand nineteen, our close neighbor to the east, Cedric County, was very quick to determine that wind energy was going to have a negative impact on their county and issued a moratorium on renewable energy to review this. On August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, they issued a full ban of wind energy. A very smart, quick decision on their county's health. In even more recent months, McPherson County has also banned wind energy, a good example for Reno to follow, in my opinion. The following details are not information pulled from the internet as some have accused this information in the past, and they have no way to back up their accusations. My personal information is at the bottom of this document, and any...if any of the commissioners are free to contact me directly for details on backing up this information. Two years ago, a local housing developer was in talks to purchase a piece of property in southeast Reno County. The initial concept was going to start off with twenty lots ranging in size from five to ten acres each. Covenants would be in place at certain minimums, like a minimum square footage house of fifteen hundred square feet, and so on. After discovering that a wind farm was a possibility to be built, he reviewed his return on investment on this new development and then decided it was not a good financial decision. So he has put that investment on hold. The future of this development is solely dependent on the county's decision on wind energy. It will not be built if wind energy is allowed to be built in this area. Currently, there is a thirty-seven lot of housing development called Indian Ridge being constructed just four miles east of my project, just inside Reno County, inside Cedric County. The development is only a year and a half old. They have sold thirty-two of thirty-seven lots. Seven of the lots are already occupied, one just recently completed, and eight are in the construction phase. It is estimated that these appraised values are at a minimum of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand up to seven-hundred thousand. Lots range in size from two-and-a-half acres up to ten acres, with an average size of three acres. They have covenants in place to help protect the value of this development, and that is likely a reason for the rapid sale of the lots. This is proof in the pudding that this area of the state is growing with new development. Let's do some simple math. One familiar with property tax appraisals and the mill levy in the area know that a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar house will be well over five thousand in yearly property taxes. So let's be conservative and just use that five thousand. If the county received five thousand per property, times the twenty lots that was being considered by the developer in southeast Reno County, that would be a hundred thousand per year for just those twenty houses that don't currently exist. I increased each year by three percent. We all know that is likely low, but again, I want to be on the low end of this estimate. I then took it out fifty years, and that value is over eleven million just for that one little development. You can also know that the area of the county is growing two to three homes a year. Again, do some simple math, and understanding by the new growth we are seeing, we can quickly surpass the estimate that the wind farm suggests the county would receive from their development. Other things to consider is, I'm not aware of a ten-year tax deferment for my personal property, and I'm also not aware of personal properties being used, being able to be depreciated over time. People build and move, and moving in is an instant return for the county, and values always go up, which is completely opposite of wind energy. I have gone door to...I have not gone door-to-door to do a full survey of everybody in southeast corner of Reno County. But I do know for a fact that a very close neighbor has built a dirt pad for a sixty-by-one-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot shed, but immediately put it on hold due to wind energy. Another one has a large home improvement project on hold for same reasons. There is another landowner that is more on the northwest portion of the proposed footprint that has plans to develop anywhere from four to eight lots ranging from five to ten acres each. All of these projects will not happen if turbines are built in southeast corner of the county. Less than one-half mile away from my property inside Reno County on Maple Grove Road is a corner property that has eight three-acre lots with two-acre easements, fourteen-hundred-foot square minimums for these houses. They have had these on the market for some time. Not one lot is sold. Two potential buyers backed out once it was disclosed that wind energy was a possibility for southeast Reno County. Based on conversations with potential buyers, he anticipates six, if not all eight, of these lots will be sold within two years. The same landowner is selling other lots just two miles south inside Cedric County, and he has sold eight of the fifteen lots in the last six months. He tells me a large amount of this interest is due to the local small private Saint Joe Catholic School and other things like the lake and the close proximity to Cedric and Wichita. Which brings me to my next point. The wind energy developer also has an incentive to participating landowners that they would donate to one of five different schools on a yearly basis. The Rwinwick School District, which covers part of that affected area, was very clear in their first public hearing that they did not want this money. One new home not only brings new money to the area for these schools, but it also brings new life. These are young families with young children that naturally help schools grow. The loss of these new homes is priceless, in my opinion. As you also know, the more the development, the more it increases the overall value of the area. I hate to speculate how many others that live, currently live in the area or potential new home builders are doing the same thing and waiting to see if Reno County is going to properly protect its citizens with proper regulations or a full ban. Wind energy developers also claim that there is a construction jobs that will come. They are right. They will be here for six months, and I'm willing to speculate that they will gravitate towards Wichita for housing, food, entertainment, et cetera, because it's more appealing. It is also known that most of the contractors are required...that are required to build this come from out of state and for sure outside of Reno County. I helped run a construction company, and we worked in twenty-four states last year, so I'm very familiar with traveling labor and understanding the needs of my employees when they travel away from home. The developer also claims that it will bring full-time jobs to the county. Several years ago, they brought an employee of theirs to come talk to this very commission, how much he enjoyed working for the company inside Reno, inside Kingman County. Then he disclosed that he lives in Goddard, which is in Cedric County. Not sure how Kingman County is benefiting from that. There is also speculation that they will share resources from their other locations, as they currently do, so Reno County will not see all the money the developer claims. Mr. Sellers claimed in a couple of dates in history that he says negatively affected Reno County's economy. I agree with him in the fact that we can do better. And I don't think the majority of the current commissioners want to kill the growth in southeast corner of the county to be another statistic for someone in the future by allowing wind energy to be built. Mr. Sellers claims that other sister counties, which have embraced the energy solution, will outpace the economy of Reno County. Mr. Sellers claims that other sister counties, which have embraced the energy solution, will outpace the economy of Reno County. I'm speculating. This is an opinion, and I would encourage Mr. Sellers to provide the backup for this comment and provide info of other sister counties that have similar population, density, growth, proximity to large cities, and so on. Like I mentioned earlier, I suggest we follow our sister companies to the east and northeast in a wise decision to protect this corner of the county with a ban on wind energy and allow Reno County to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Tallman, T.H.A.L.M.A.N.N., one five eight one seven, South Haven Road. I'm a retired teacher and coach, and I farm with my son, who also lives on South Haven Road. We were both squarely in the footprint of a previously planned wind farm. As you know, the responsible sighting of wind turbines is an issue of setbacks. How far must a turbine be from buildings, road right-of-ways, or non-participating property lines? As you've heard, there's a lot of wind farms in Kansas, but none of them are located in an area as densely populated as some parts of rural Reno County. The more people congregated in an area, the more concerns regarding proximity to a wind turbine. Some concerns you've already heard, and I know you've heard many times over the last couple of years. They could include property values, noise, wildlife concerns, scenic views, ice throw. Another concern is shadow flicker. Now, the contention exists that that phenomenon is only a nuisance. And even if that's all there was, that should not be discounted as a valid reason. However, it is a fact that shadow flicker can exacerbate some conditions. For example, with what is called photosensitive epilepsy, there's a possibility of seizures caused by shadow flicker. And I can tell you, when you've got an eleven-year-old granddaughter that's been diagnosed with epilepsy, that is a serious concern. I'm not, however, saying that any of these other concerns are not serious. Some factors could mitigate the effects of shadow flicker. Distance is a factor that can be regulated with the greatest certainty. We're asking for setbacks that would reduce possible negative impact. As the petition that you received stated, three thousand feet or six times turbine height would be a minimum distance to help cap shadow flicker to our requested limit of no more than twenty hours a year. We also feel that three times turbine height from road right-of-ways would protect public safety. In order to safeguard future construction and possible development, the three-thousand-foot setback should apply to non-participating property lines. Without this level of setback protection, non-participants would have significant areas of their parcels unsuitable and unsafe for a new home, maybe several new homes in a development, or quite a few outside activities in that area. To summarize, we're asking for setbacks of three thousand feet or six times turbine height from non-participating property lines and fifteen hundred feet or three times turbine height from roadways. Now, we're all in favor of efficient, reliable energy. With setbacks at our requested distance, there are still large portions of Reno County that would not be eliminated from consideration for a commercial wind energy conversion system. Thank you. I've got copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have copies, if that's okay to pass them out?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Schmidt. That's S.C.H.M.I.D.T. I live at one-three-one-one-four East Lake Cable Road. I am here to ask the Reno County Commission what's more important, protecting our citizens' property rights and real estate values or appeasing a large developer with potentially empty promises? I own a real estate brokerage in Haven specializing in rural residential sales. I also served as Economic Development Director for four years for the city of Haven. I am a second-term school board member for USD three-twelve. I understand the challenges of being a public servant and trying to weigh the pros and cons, and I hope we can come up with a win-win. Perception equals value. Just like the perception of me wearing this sweatshirt is a little different than if I was wearing a business suit. Much like a turbine on a beautiful open prairie, value changes through visual differences. Many things can negatively affect value of properties, such as proximity to a highway, crime being in floodplain, haunted houses. Wide-open spaces and serene evenings on a porch watching the sunset, places to hunt, play, ranch, or farm away from buildings and close by neighbors are reasons why people move to rural Reno County. Perception drives buying decisions. For example, the perceived enjoyment of a home on a beautiful unobstructed open prairie versus a home with a massive wind turbine next to it. How do I even write a description to attract someone to that property? When a buyer acts on perception, they establish value, and we see the effects of this perception. The forensic appraisal service out of Nina, Wisconsin, the same group that performed the impact value analysis for Reno County, did a study that evaluated what would happen if a turbine was located twenty-six hundred feet away from a one-to-five-acre value-improved property line. The Realtor study determined that it would lead to a loss of sixty percent in value. They also did an impact analysis of that, of actually looking at the sales data to see what actually happened, and that was consistent with that Realtor study. It was about a twelve-to-forty law, twenty, twelve-to-forty percent loss, but there was never a positive impact on value. They did find that the farther away the turbine, the less loss in value. Currently, we are in a very hot seller's market, meaning homes sell for quickly, more quickly, and for greater values. I took a look at the research in home sales in the last twenty-four months on three-to-ten acre parcels. And that's some of the information I provided to you. There's one that I wrote on the top as northern, and the one says southern. What I did was essentially cut it across Highway fifty. Anything north of Highway fifty, the homes were selling for ninety-eight-point-four percent of the list price, meaning that they're almost selling at the price that they were listed at. In the south part, south of Highway fifty, homes were selling for ninety-one-point-nine percent of list price, indicating we are already starting to see the negative impact of even just the potential for wind in our county. Wind is being disclosed and is the reason for oftentimes when people provide feedback after they've seen a home, they provide feedback, and wind has been disclosed as a factor as why they did not choose that home. Two really important examples stick out in my mind. I put the addresses there for you to see. Seventeen thousand five South Haven Road took fifty-eight thousand less than asking price. Wind was a factor in determining that asking, or that contract price. Fifteen four oh one South Kent Road took nineteen thousand less than asking price. They had one contract that actually fell through because they found out that wind was a potential. I decided to also poll my own Reno County buyers about how they would feel about turbines within twenty-five hundred feet of their home. Seventy-one percent of my current active home buyers in rural Reno County have indicated that they would not purchase a home near a turbine, even if it's exactly what they were looking for. I provided that data in your packet as well. And, you know, it's, there's times when I go show a house and they have popcorn ceilings, they won't buy them. I can't even imagine what a wind turbine would do. Ninety-three percent of rural Reno County homeowners say they would sell their home if wind turbines were placed within twenty-five hundred feet. And ninety-eight percent feel that they would decrease the home value. All this to say, if there is a benefit to the county, real estate valuations will also be negatively impacted, resulting in a loss of tax revenue. Not to mention the human element of a wind farm placement. These are people's homes. I also called real estate brokerages in Kingman, Pratt, Greensburg, and Anderson, Anderson County to see what their experience had been. They actually laughed at me in Kingman because the property values weren't affected because there are so few homes in the footprint. And unlike Reno County, most of those folks that are benefiting because they're getting a check, so it doesn't really matter to them. Being a former economic development professional, I'd also like to point out the goal of job creation and economic development is to create primary jobs. Primary jobs, you can think about permanent jobs that produce goods that are sold outside of the local economy. When I asked these counties that I called, what effect, I called their economic development folks and their chamber folks, I said, what effect did you see from these wind farms? They mostly boasted about the short-term benefit to the restaurants and the retail, which I want for us too here in Reno County. But those are secondary jobs. Their construction crews come from out of town, and then they leave. When I was involved in the ribbon-cutting with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber for Tenawa Haven, they celebrated with a shrimp boil. Why? Because their construction crew was from Louisiana. They would soon be headed back home. They stayed in campers, or they'd go to Wichita and stay there for the nightlife. There's a chance that Hutchinson and Reno County won't even really see the same benefit that is being promoted from the secondary jobs and secondary benefits, supposed benefits. Is a project that is not even sustainable without tax credits to construct these monstrous turbines worth such just a short-term benefit? Is Haven booming as a result of the short-term benefit of Tenawa? Yeah, we have a few new jobs there, but the restaurants and the grocery store closed after the construction was done in Tenawa. A wise Harlan Prittle once told me that if a project has to be sustained by tax credits, it will not be sustainable. In closing, I urge you to protect the residents in this densely populated area of Reno County by adopting the three-thousand-foot setback from property lines or moving the property, or excuse me, moving the project to a less densely populated area of the county. Thank you.
Jessica.
Thank you.
Andy Hilton, one zero four zero eight East Smoots Creek Road. I know we're running short on time here, but I'll be quick.
You have about ten minutes.
We have ten minutes?
Hmm, not quite.
Oh, okay.
Eleven fifty-seven is what I had.
I had my clock on. Okay, oh, fine. Well, I'll draw this out.
Doesn't mean you have to draw it out.
All right, let me hand you a couple, well, a couple pages of stuff. This is not written as a as a speech. It's just a bunch of bullet points, so. We've heard from experts on both sides, right, and we've heard, we've all had the sentiment that the truth is somewhere in the middle. All right, but what I want to talk to you about is what's really in the middle. Who's caught in the middle are the, the people that live in the rural part of the county, right? They're the people that are bearing the brunt of the impact and the handful of people that will, will benefit and off the backs of the people that live in that part of the county. Okay? I sent you guys an email about the not-in-my-backyard concept, the nimbie thing, and to me, that's not something that we all need to apologize for. It's a real thing. Okay, and nobody in this room or that spoke earlier is any different, right? Nobody wants something in their backyard that affects their backyard. And in the case of wind farms, they actually do affect your backyard through things like shadow flicker, noise, ice throw, all right? The wind farm will literally be in some folks' backyard, okay? They'll be on their house, in their house, shadow flicker, noise. Folks that spoke earlier can say all they want about the noise isn't too bad, shadow flicker isn't too bad. Well, they're not the ones living out there. I would question how many people that spoke in, in favor of the regulations actually live in the rural part of this county. I think that number's zero, pretty sure. Most of them are in county or in, in, in city or out of the county, okay? So what you've heard from here, everybody lives in this part of the county, all right? The rural part of the county. And those people that live in that area, we've spoken, right? You've heard from us all. You've heard from us in the form of petitions, right? Four petitions, seven hundred signatures in one, four hundred in another. The most recent, five hundred and seventeen signatures gathered in a week during a pandemic, during an Arctic snowstorm, by a handful of people. Five hundred and seventeen signatures. Mr. Sellers, I think you, I think it was you, it was either you or Mr. Bush that kind of spoke despairingly, disparagingly about the four hundred people that lived down in that part of the county during the next era public hearing. Well, there's five hundred and seventeen signatures right there, and that's the tip of the iceberg. It was one of you two. Just trust me on that. You could check it. I think it was a public event. We've also spoke in the form of, at the public hearings, right? Hundred forty-eight speakers at the public hearing, hundred twenty-eight were for, or were against the CUP, twenty were for the CUP. All right, that's eighty-six-point-five percent were opposed to that CUP. All right? Opposed to that CUP that had the restrictions that you're talking about possibly approving, and what the people that spoke previously, they said approve those, those regulations have already been denied once. What's the point of doing this again? We need better regulations than what were in the next era CUP. Not to mention that, again, back to the twenty speakers for the CUP, the vast majority of those did not live in rural county. A large percentage of those didn't even live in the county, and almost all of them were being paid by wind energy in some form or another, directly or indirectly. Contrast on the other side, not one person was paid to be a speaker at that public hearing. Protest petitions, Daniel mentioned this in his, his letter. We reached a fifty percent level of protest petitions, and if you factor in the fact that not all that land qualified, right, because a lot of it was unzoned, let's say, let's include the land that did qualify for protest petitions, probably about fifty percent of that was owned by participants. So it, it wasn't available for protest. You have to sign something with next era saying I will not protest. All right, so we have almost one hundred percent participation in the protest petitions for landowners. Think about that. Again, another form of the way that people have spoken in that area. Hundred percent of the people almost that could protest it, they did. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan. We've talked about this before. It identified the southeast quadrant as the fastest-growing, and let me use the their points here, it says they identify the southeast, southeastern quadrant of the county as its highest-growth area. That's this area. And I was generous in making it a little bit smaller than the actual southeast quadrant. And they also stated that the reason that it grows is because it's between Wichita and Hutch. Right? Obvious, right? Well, this is what a wind farm looks like in that area, right? It covers most of that area, same area. And this area is between Wichita and Hutch. It's growing naturally. Not because Reno did something, not because Cedric did something to make that area grow. It's growing because it's in between Wichita and Hutch. And it always will be between Wichita and Hutch, okay? You can't now designate the southwestern corner as a highest-growth area. You're not going to be able to do that, right? You can't make that happen. Counties have tried, tax incentives and otherwise. So the highest-growth area is here. It always will be here. It's not going to move. It's not going to move to the northeastern corner. It's here in the southeastern corner, okay? So to do this to the southeastern corner is to say, we're going to stop that growth. Not interested in that growth. We want two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for thirty years. Thirty years. Thirty years from now, my house will still be paying taxes. Where will that wind farm be? All right? In a landfill somewhere. What we're proposing, folks, are better regulations. The three thousand feet, we've sent you the numbers. How about no shadow flicker, right? How about when we build our homes, we were under kind of an unspoken agreement with the county that we wouldn't be subjected to shadow flicker from five-hundred-foot-tall towers? We wouldn't be subjected to noise of any level from an industrial facility in the middle of our rural county. How about we go back to that?
One minute.
One minute. What we'd like to propose is a ban on this corner. If, if you can't find to make- If you can't find to make regulations for the entire county, ban it in this corner and do what you want with the rest. Still, I suggest reasonable regulations, something better than what Next Era did, or at least what Next Era did. And furthermore, why not join this, this Freedom Corridor here, started by McPherson? Just ban it in the eastern part of the county because we know it's not going to fit there. It's not going to fit up by Bueller. It's not going to fit around Hutch.
Okay, Andy, that's it. We got time. The 30 minutes is up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now, do we have any questions? I, I think I have one to start it. And Jessica? Thanks for staying.
Sure.
Jessica, you mentioned you're active rural home buyers in Reno County?
Yes.
Where, are they just in, all over Reno County? Are they just, your rural active home buyers, are they, that you inquired with, are they just in the southeast corner, or are they other parts of Reno County? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is, is to verify your rural home buyer statements, okay?
Sure. I would say that they're in, in various areas because it's hard for people, most people just want a rural property, some land with a home. If they have kids, then they may be looking for a specific school district. I didn't bring that information with me, but I would venture to guess that probably about 75% of those folks are looking in the Haven School District because that's where I'm based out of, is Haven area, so it would be that southeastern part of...
But they would be, are they moving in from a different area or within that area?
These are oftentimes people living maybe in Hutchinson or Haven or something, and they're wanting to move out to a home with land and more space. Some, I would say probably four of the people I can think of off the top of my head are moving into Reno County from another location, whether it be out of state or out of county.
Okay. Thank you. That answered the question I had.
I had one for you, and I don't, I just want your input being, previously being an economic development director, what, like, I mean, we heard the, the people before you make some real good arguments about this is detrimental to the economic development goals of, of the county. And, and being a realtor now, I mean, obviously, you would, you would, I assume you would want economic development in our county. How do, how do, how do you think we best deal with that intersection of economic interest and property owner interest?
It's a great question. I think that it's important to balance both. I remember doing economic development for Haven, and there were times when we got flashy projects in front of us, such as, you know, Dollar General was one, sounds, we're a small town, so that was, that was a win for, for some people in their minds. And so when they came and gave their proposals, they wore their suits and ties and, and came to us and said, we want to bring Dollar General to this town, and, and there were some people against it and some people for it, and I, I remember being the person that sort of had to kind of guide how that process worked. And, you know, I think it was easy for a lot of people to have that carrot dangled in front of them that we were going to have all this economic impact and benefit from that development, and then later on, our grocery store closed because they couldn't compete with the prices and things. And those are real people, that their lives and livelihood was affected. And so that wears on my heart, and so I, I know that you have to balance this here because there is some real economic benefit being proposed here, and I don't discount that. But I do think that there's also people, I'm sorry, this is important to me, there are also people that these are their homes, and I just, it's hard for me to think that it's okay to just invade on their property rights. These people move out there because they want to be in that open space. I think the answer to the question is either consider greater setbacks or consider a different area of the county, and we can have a win-win here.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
Anybody? Mr. Sellers, for anyone?
Thank you.
Commissioner Friesen, do you have any other?
No, 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 thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't either. So this will conclude that 30-minute session with questions answered, asked afterwards. I would ask commissioners, do you want a break for lunch? Or do you want to continue for a little longer? I mean, we can continue a little longer, it's up to you, but...
Well, I'd, I'd have two comments. One is, I, I'd like some time to process this. I think there's, I mean, I know we've had lots of time, and I know that might be a counter argument to what I'm saying, but I'd like to absorb this today and work on my final thoughts, and I'm not going to be ready to vote today, and, and so I don't know that going through what we went through two weeks ago is going to produce any significant work today. I think we're down to a couple key points, and what I saw the staff bring back on, on the red lines, I think is, you know, it's clear there's just a couple things, and perhaps that's better in a meeting after things are absorbed here. My second comment is, I would like a 10-minute executive session, and I can make that motion for conference with county counselor on privileged communications. But, you know, those are my two comments.
I don't disagree with Daniel. I think that we've heard some very good information today, and he wants more time to digest what we've heard. I guess, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I guess I'd like, I've got a couple questions of fact that I'd like to ask the county planner if he's available, just, just questions of, is this true? Is that appropriate before we adjourn? And I think maybe it would help both what you're doing and what I'm going through at this point.
I think I have some things also, Commissioner Sellers, so that may...
Is Mark available?
Coming.
Okay.
I have some things.
But I, I agree with Daniel, but to, I think probably all of us would have a longer speech than need be, but maybe we should digest what we've found today. Mark, would you come and introduce yourself for the record, and I have a couple questions?
Mark Fonnyatchan, I'm the county planner.
Okay. My first question, and, and I think I know what you told me some time back, but maybe I misunderstood, but several times during testimony today, we heard that this area that, and candidly, all these people that talked today are part of the southeast quadrant of Reno County, mentioned several times that this is the highest growth area of the county. Now, I recall six, eight months ago asking you that question, and you said that you couldn't either confirm or deny that, but you did not think that this was the highest growth area property-wise of the county. Can you recall that conversation?
Yes, I do, yeah.
And what, what do you feel is the best information that you can provide on that?
Well, I guess you have to define what is economic, you know, growth or so. You know, is it, is it people, you know, moving into that area, into existing homes, or are we talking strictly about new permits that are being issued? And if we're just talking about growth as far as new permits being issued, I would say that this area is no greater or less than any other area of the area of the county that is zoned. At the time, you know, we had that conversation, you'd have to recall that there was a big area of that county that was currently unzoned and did not need any permits. So I don't have any statistics on that area, and my conversation with you at that time did not include that area, so there could have been other houses, there could have been other accessory structures built at that time that did not need a permit. And so when I, when I talk about growth area, I'm talking about as far as new permits being issued.
But are we talking about two, two different things, Commissioner Sellers? I mean, one is staff's opinion, and then the other, I think, is, is an actual quote from the comprehensive plan, and I think that's what they were quoting, wasn't it?
Yeah. The comprehensive plan calls out that area, but I think a lot of that is based off of the census data that comes into play when you start in developing a comprehensive plan.
Okay. Okay. My, my next question is, no matter what is voted on eventually by this commission to approve or not approve, is it true that when a developer would put together another project, whether it be there, Purdy Prairie, or Arlington, or, or not, well, in the zoned area, before they can get a conditional use permit, that the adjacent property owners still have the right to, to petition against us for a supermajority vote?
In the zoned area of the county, correct, yes.
So no matter what the regulations are, the adjacent property owners have the right to petition against that CUP for a supermajority vote?
If it's a conditional use permit, that's correct, yes, because that requires a, a public hearing. And then those adjoining property owners within 1,000 feet would have the opportunity to file a protest petition, and then we would calculate that area of their property that is within the 1,000-foot, and if it's greater than 20%, then it would require a supermajority to approve a project.
Okay. Those are the two questions of fact that I had.
I don't have any questions for you at all.
Thank you.
I've just got something I'd like to go over because I think there's some items in this that would, would help understand a little bit about not only economic development, but what other counties have done, not that we have to follow other counties. But I think...
Mr. Chairman, I thought we decided to leave our comments for our next meeting.
Well, I, I think that there was some things brought out, and, and like Daniel said, he wants to think about it, so I think it's, would be appropriate myself to cover some issues that might have a bearing on how we think, I think this through, and that's not for or against, it's just information that other places have done. For instance, it has to do with property rights as determined by the Kansas Supreme Court in another county that I think would be worthwhile knowing about if we haven't already researched some of these things. I think there's some talk that went on with regards to whether we're open for business or not in the county that related to what was offered to us, as well as, as talked about as economic development that might influence how we look at things. I know it's, it's changed my mind a little bit when I did some research in trying to come up with actual economic benefit to the county versus what has been proposed before. And, you know, I'll save it till later if you want to, but I, I just think we need to forget about politics and look at facts. And so I thought, and it, it got some very definite dollar influence on, I think, how we look at, at projects within the county, whether it has to do with wind or anything else. So, you know, I talked to Clark County, Anderson County, Allen County, Wabunzi County, and I think there's some information to glean from that, that we need to look at, as well as the actual dollars and the economic impact that various projects might bring to the county, and what it would mean to local people within the county. But if the bulk of the commission want me to forego this till later, I will do that, but I think it's...
I mean, I, I think, I, maybe let me try to bridge the divide here. I think, I think what...
I've been there before.
I think what Commissioner Sellers is trying to do, and, and what I was trying to do, was, was not get into significant debate. I think you make a point that if you have something to say, you're not going to have an opportunity to say it to me or Commissioner Sellers for at least another two weeks unless we have a special meeting. So I think maybe if we, I'm okay with listening to it. I just, like, I don't, I don't want to get into a big debate either, but if you've got some points, like, I think, given, given that you can't really communicate with me outside of this meeting, that's a weighted factor for me, so if you don't, I know it's lunchtime, and maybe you can give us the...
Quick, short summary? Is that what you're looking at?
How about the short summary of your comments?
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of them that I, I think we need to look at politics, forget politics and just look at facts. And I know what we've been told, we've been told about all the gross revenue that the county can get from a wind energy conversion system power plant. But I think it's absolutely necessary that we look at a net outcome rather than looking at net value, look at net value of time. In other words, not just the present net value, but the net future value. And based on the household density, it's nine times, okay, what Pratt and Kingman have at least. Kingman County, you know, you look back at, at appraisers' figures and so forth, there's been, Winarkham talked with the Kingman County Commissioners on planning and zoning a couple years ago, a year and a half ago, only one new house constructed in the Wex area since And these are direct facts and figures from the appraiser's office. The average for four years in Castleton, Haven, Sumner, Nantucket, Albion is $1,260,065. We heard a lot about property rights. In this case of Zimmerman versus Board of Wabunzi County Commissioners, they, they went through the very same thing we're doing, we probably went through it a little stronger. But their statement here, and I'll just read the last, I can read it all, but I'll just read the last, "In the county's denial of placing wind farms in the entire county," and they did the whole county, which I don't think any of us want to do that, "the county didn't take any existing rights away, but only refused to expand the existing rights, including wind rights." And that's from Supreme Court ruling in Kansas, and I think that has a definite bearing on where we're headed. In talking with Clark County, they have, they, Commissioners of the PNC approved a three-quarter mile setback from a house. Spoke with Tom Young at Anderson County, they allow, according to his conversation with me, they allow one turbine per quarter unless there's a house on that quarter. There's some other things in here we've heard, Allen County, but I won't get into that. What I was looking at is net value versus gross, gross revenue. And net value takes into consideration at what price do we put on proposed future home construction, proposed and future. I can go into detail, but I won't. Tourism, out-of-state hunters, Cheney Lake, present property values and future property There's definite, from Clarkston University, McCannan Gardner, and some others, anywhere from eight to 34% within a mile, depending upon how close. View scape and community values, it's an intrinsic value, hard to put a number on it. To attract capable and quality employees, we, we see that we need quality and capable employees if, if Deborah and the Chamber are going to do their work in, in attracting business. if Deborah and the Chamber are going to do their work in, in attracting businesses. And with 16 to 18% of the county workforce and, and the largest GDP in the county, agriculture, production and manufacturing, it's hit. For instance, if we take 1,000 cow dairy that we could get, or an increase of 1,000 cows, labor and feed only is 3,858,778 dollars based upon ratios from a consultant. Doesn't include any feed costs for replacing. And that'd have been about an eight and a half million investment. Let's look at the turbines. After 10 years, based on a $2 million per turbine cost of construction, the county would receive from the Appraiser's office, uh, the last figures he had that I talked with him about, would bring in 1,218,274 dollars per year. If five employees are hired at 60,000, that's 300. That's 1,518,274 dollars out of an 80 turbine versus the 3,858 plus. And if you multiply that, say, just five times, I don't know what the economic development multiplier is, but probably six or seven, you get 7,900, 7,591,000 from the wind turbines, and you get 19,293 from a year from another enterprise. And I'm referring only to a dairy, there's others that make things. And I know in my conversations with Public Works, that they're also looking at, would like us to give them some direction on zoning. And so I would, I would bring to you that we look to start conversations with extending zoning from Dean Road south all the way. And that would basically, if you look at the map, that would square up this area down here. Leave all the rest of the county, but we can talk to these folks about. And I would like to see within three weeks that the planning and zoning start to schedule some meetings to talk about planning and zoning, what it will do and what it won't do for the citizens. That's all, just to be able to sit down and say, this zoning will do this and it won't do. Ask questions, get input, remarks. And I think that's imperative that we start this forward. So-
Well, but, but that doesn't have, that, that doesn't answer the current question that's before this board of what the regulations for a wind project are.
No, it doesn't, but I just want to bring out this, that, that, that they would like some direction. So I think at a future meeting that we look and see and talk about some future directions for their information. No, it doesn't, but it was just a last thought on my mind, okay?
And Mr. Chairman, you're, are you concerned about the impending wind development in that particular area? Is that your primary concern?
That's one of the many.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the inquiries I have had, okay? And I think they brought this up, what, a year and a half, two years ago? With regard to speaking, Marx said at some point in time that he would, uh, get started on this. But I think we, we've been asked to give some direction, so-
I've got, I've got one question, if I may.
You may.
For county councillor, if he's willing.
You want to hear Tim?
So, in, in the... So, so there, there are the, the golden rules that they call them. And I, I found more, I just thought they were called the golden rules. I didn't actually understand that Golden was the plaintiff, right?
Right.
So, um, and, and it was, I thought it was a nationwide thing. It's actually a Kansas Supreme Court ruling. Okay. So, in there, there's, there's, um, there was some disagreement on, on a zoning application, and it went to the Supreme Court, and they listed, I think, nine? Eight or nine?
Nine factors.
Nine factors. And so, my question to you is, when does that apply? Is that something that guides us in the development of zoning regulation? Or is it, is it a factor mainly in the, um, determination of an, a, a particular application?
Yeah, my understanding is that, uh, economic development, uh, is a consideration probably in, in drafting a comprehensive plan and determining which areas of the county are suitable for certain types of development, including commercial, industrial, and so forth. I think when it comes down to applying land use regulations to a particular parcel, economic, it's the nine factors in the golden decision which need to be applied. We don't have those in front of us, some of which involve the best use of land, certainly whether this land is consistent with the land use regulations and so forth. But the number of jobs to be created on that particular site or location and the, um, amount of investment in the property is, is not an essential or an appropriate decision when you're talking about how to zone it. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Have you got a copy of the comprehensive plan yet, Daniel?
I think I do.
Okay.
Do we have a digital copy? Yeah. I, I have a motion to make when-
Yes.
I, I'd like to make a motion for the, uh, for an executive session of 10 minutes to confer with, uh, the county councillor on privileged, um, matters, attorney-client privilege matters, and I'd like to invite the county administrator to join in those conversations.
And for how long?
10 minutes.
What about the rest of the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
County administrators' report, the county commissions' report, are we engaging those items?
I thought we were done, but I forgot about that.
Okay. Do you have-
I'll withdraw my motion until we're ready.
All right, go ahead. Okay.
Okay, go to the court.
Your report.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it to your attention that Reno County Fire District Number Seven has sent a letter to, went to Adam, and then he gave it to me, that they want to purchase property in the city of Turon for a new fire station. Purchase price is $3,000 for all seven lots. That would take commission approval. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. That is a request. We are letting them know until we get the fire study, that, not to plan too far out, but I was just giving you information on that. And then in a report, my weekly report, I had mentioned, it'll come up at some time, so I just wanted to bring that up again, about the Reno County Annex to see if there's any input before it comes to the county commission for a decision or any thoughts you guys have on the annex. At the special meeting at the end of January, it was mentioned as that, putting audiovisual equipment, equipping that room, the conference room over there, to be similar to what the public works department has, where they have planning commission meetings with McClellan, um, sound. To do that, for the audiovisual, and then to do a mobile tricaster system, which is what we have in here running. Videoing the meeting right now is $30,500. I just kind of want to bring that to your attention and see if you want to give me any input prior to bringing that to the county commission meeting. And I'd hand out if that's something you guys want coming up pretty quick, or more discussion on that before it's an action item.
I think that from my standpoint, $30,500, I want to know how often that is, you, could be used over there. And, and we have a, we have an $8,800 study here looking at this area out here as a potential use for... I, I would hate to duplicate and start up myself. I, I like, I like the, the whole thing, but I, if we're not going to use it that much, I, I, I want to know the use of it before we spend $30,500. That's my stand.
I think I share the chairman's feeling on that, that, that I feel that this room is long-term inappropriate for our meetings. But if our architect's study provides an area that we can move to within a logical period of time, I'd rather look at that instead of equipping that room at this point.
That, I, I think it's really important that every primary building in the county has effective virtual conferencing capability, and so I'm a little, little more, you know, in favor of moving forward, and I'd like to try to make a decision in two weeks. I know there's still some discussion whether we move this, this meeting there temporarily. But I think we're, we're a little behind on our use of, of virtual conferencing with, with the commission's work. Made some improvements, but if we can use that, and, and the clerk and others at the annex indicate they would use it more, I would be in support of that.
Well, uh, going back to what I said, the chairman's remarks, I also agree with you, Daniel, that if, uh, clerk, the treasurer, the other people that are in that building can suggest that that would be used extensively, I could be swayed that it's a good county project even if we're not involved.
Yeah.
So, to me, we need more feedback from that group over there of potential usage. Because I, I, I agree with you that, that you made a statement a while back, and in our planning session and all, that we're behind on technology, and I would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to see if we can use it enough.
I'll talk with Donna, the county clerk, and then there's over the annex, see how often that room does get used and what they're needed for the audiovisual basis. We wouldn't need the mobile tricaster equipment, which is a good portion of that $30,000, so. The other thing, kind of on the report I sent, was about the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, Commerce membership. Give you guys a list of possible options. Based on the way that the Chamber does their memberships now, based on, there's a base amount and then number of employees. With our number of employees, it would be $3,900, and that would get us at the cornerstone level. But the cornerstone level starts at 1,500, since we're a government entity, Denver was okay with, um, Reno County just coming up. They wanted, if we wanted the cornerstone level, to pay $1,500. They kind of mentioned a couple comparisons of other memberships that Reno County's a part of. NACO costs $1,290 a year. The Kansas Associations of Counties cost $13,949. This would be $1,500. Just want to get some input, or if there's additional information you guys would like to see before the decision's made.
I'd like to see that put on an agenda for discussion in a, either an up or down.
I agree.
I'll put it on the next meeting. I just wanted to bring those to your attention again and get some input. That's all I have.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yeah, I just had a few, few other comments today. One was, uh, there's been some, you know, discussion in the news, uh, and, and in front of Hutchinson City Council related to, um, some, some ongoing conversations between the, the county sheriff and, and the police chief and, and city administrator. And, um, I had a chance to talk to the sheriff, um, and, and plan to talk to, uh, the, the mayor of the city of Hutch, just to ensure, um, that we are working together as a county and a city. I, I, I think it's imperative, given, given the overlap we have, that, that there, there's certainly no reason that we, we should not be working together on, on all levels, including law enforcement. I mean, uh, you know, beyond just the efficiency and, and, and need for, for taxpayer efficiency and expenditures, I think there's a level of, of safety amongst, uh, the, the people of the county and, and the officers themselves that, 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 um, are, are much better served when we're working together. And so, um, I appreciate, uh, the sheriff's, um, efforts and, and the police chief's efforts to, to, um, resolve any particular disagreement they may have. I know there's some ongoing issues related to the gun range that we're, we're trying to sort out. And so I would just, you know, publicly encourage them to continue to find ways to work together for, for the, the greater good of, of our community. I, I think, um, you know, I, in relation to ongoing COVID policy, uh, and, and some trending, um, data, it's going in the right direction. I, I think it, it might be a good time for this commission to, um, uh, look at, um, just the full scope of, of policy that we have on the table and, and how, how things are being implemented. I've had some great discussions with Dr. Polly, I had discussions with a number of the Reno County pediatricians this week, and, and for me, I, I think for you guys too, um, you know, primary concern right now is, is the impact of certain policy for, um, our children. And, and so having conversations, um, about where, where our policy stands related to, um, for example, quarantining, uh, classrooms and so forth. I think, um, I think this commission, as the Board of Public Health, should, should engage a little more now that we kind of have some wide open space, um, and, and things are a little loosened. I think it's a, it's a perfect time to engage on the other side of the pendulum. You know, in an emergency, I think you just have to make a decision and go. Now that we're on the other side, I think there's, there's some opportunity to, um, you know, perhaps, um, experiment on the other side of the pendulum related to, uh, decreased, um, policy that, that may be restricting things now that, that doesn't need to be restricted. So that's a broad statement. There's a lot, a lot of opportunity for conversation, and I, I'd like to, to see maybe an agenda item or a study session with the health officer in the health department on, on what we're doing in that regard soon. I had one other thing, but I forgot it. I'll let you guys go.
Commissioner Sellers?
Uh, yes, uh, I totally agree with, uh, Commissioner Friesen's thoughts on the recent police sheriff controversy. I think, uh, that was done inappropriately by the police department with the approval of the city manager, and I hope we get back to square one where we're totally cooperating. We need to cooperate, as he, as Commissioner Friesen said, uh, in services any way we can among, uh, uh, our governmental units. And so I hope that that's back to square one. I, uh, did see the sheriff this morning, and I thanked him for the recent announcement that, uh, they're going to be having people over at the Boys and Girls Club on an ongoing basis. I think that is fantastic that you have, uh, law enforcement, uh, in a non-combative situation. Uh, it can't be done too much, so I'm glad that we're doing that. A, a quick comment, uh, there was an article in the paper by one of our past commissioners that said that he didn't feel our, our donation to our favorite charity, which was new beginnings, was appropriate. And I, I just totally disagree with that comment, that the fact that, that, that drug abuse is, if not the biggest problem, it's very close to the biggest problem in Reno County. And anything that we can help do to- And anything that we can help do to negate that on a, in a small way is, is part of what this government should be doing. I'm concerned about this, what Adam brought up about the state emergency mandate and declaration going away. It sounds like it would hurt his functions greatly. I'm wondering if we should do something letter-wise or something to suggest that, that declaration still needs to be in place so that Reno County can continue to receive those services that it is. I, I think that's very important of what Adam is doing. And Daniel, are you going to continue to attend the stepping up meetings of Reno County? If you are, that's great because from today's conversation, I think one of us needs to, one of the three of the commissioners. If you've been doing that, are you willing to continue doing that?
Yeah, I, I kind of fell into it just because it was Commissioner Bush's slot.
Right.
But I'm happy to trade or if, if you feel more passionate about it, I've, I'm happy to allow you to step in too. I don't, I don't-
No, I, I think it's-
It's been good to-
It's an important group that meets and I think they're trying to do some good things and so one of us needs to be. And if you're comfortable and chairman's comfortable having you be that person, I-
It's been a good experience and I'll let you guys know if, if I happen to have to miss one, so you guys can fill in.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Yeah, I also have visited with sheriff a couple of times last week and things are going well. I, I think they're progressing well. Understood, getting communications between them to understand things. And, and I was on the commission when we started the stepping up program and I, it's a huge, great program. And has been, Reno County's been recognized along with Douglas County in their efforts and what they've done and what they've improved the program at. So-
I can't believe they're stealing our employee.
I don't like that, yeah. But we'll, we'll work things out and, and it's been such a boom, I think, to the whole learning program and educational program of the jail of those who have been incarcerated for a while. And I think that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to convene an executive session for, for no longer than 20 minutes for matters of, of attorney-client privilege to talk to the county councillor and invite the county administrator to be included.
Okay. Second? I'll second. And I noticed you put an extra 10 minutes in there for county councillor.
I did, just, just, just in case.
Okay.
I hope we don't need it.
Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, with the impact that will be, no decisions made after the session, after the executive session, okay?
And then at that point you'll adjourn.
And at that point, we'll adjourn the meeting.